Uh, let's start with a roll call.
Sure, Mr. Baxendale. Mr. Baxendale's present?
Um, he's muted.
Yep.
Present, my boy.
We're letting everybody warm up for the Zoom. Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Pachus? Mr. Muschak?
Here.
Mr. Cantor? Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
And Mr. Shulman, and I think Mr. Williams, I heard him, I don't see him.
I am here. Yeah, I'm just going up to my house as we speak, so.
I'm here as well.
Okay.
All right, um, the first item of business review in action on applications, 2022-19 R/SP/SPR Wegmans Food Market, 47 Richards Avenue, and 77, 667, 651 Connecticut Avenue, zoning text amendment, special permit, and site plan review application. I understand here that we're being asked to authorize a peer review traffic study at the request of TNP. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes, correct.
Do you want to give a bit of an introduction to that?
Sure, and Jay Klein from Carmody, who's representative of the applicant is on, got any questions from him, but in further conversations with TNP staff, based on the traffic study, they felt just based on the complexity of the intersections involved, that it'd be a good idea to have a second set of eyes take a look at this, so we've talked to AKRF, who did a couple of recent studies with them, staff's been very pleased with their work, and we would recommend that you authorize them to proceed with the study, and then once they're further along in that, we can work on scheduling the public hearing. As you recall, there are a couple of different applications associated with this, there's the text amendment as well as the site plan approval, so you know, those could go on parallel tracks, but not necessarily have to be approved on the same track.
And I guess I'd like to remind Wegmans of what I perceive to be the seriousness of the request from the commissioners at the last meeting for a serious study of the possibility of using photovoltaics on the property, either above the parking structure or at some other location where it's appropriate.
Go ahead, Jay. If I may, Steve and Mr. Chairman, other commissioners, thanks so much. Our team is, Steve let us know that the peer review would likely be recommended tonight, so our traffic expert, John Plant, is already, you know, sharpening his pencil for any comments that they have. And Mr. Chairman, you'll be pleased to know that our team is researching that very issue, you know, and just broader sustainability at the store at large. I'm sorry, my screen here has me going in and out of witness protection here. Sorry about that. So, you know, we are.
We appreciate that.
Right, yeah.
I don't mean the witness protection beast.
What I can tell you is that, you know, we've been, and Brian and Steve can tell you how much, we've been bugging them daily, obviously eager to move this forward, and we'll have all questions and concerns addressed. We're hoping that we can at least open our public hearing with you all on July 7, and understanding if not everything's wrapped up by the 7th, the hearing would be continued. That's the only other comment I'd offer tonight.
Steve, are we likely to have the results of the traffic peer review by then?
No, I would doubt it at this point, because I believe in speaking with AKRF, they indicated they were looking at some, they needed analysis at some further out intersections, so I don't know if the applicant's team has did that as part of their initial work, so they may need to go back and collect some additional data. I think we can, you know, depending on the, you know, the agenda itself, we could open the hearing, and you could always deal with the text amendment at that point, and then or at least get that portion of the hearing out of the way, and then continue the hearing until a date and time where we have further results on the traffic study.
I think that's something that requires a little bit of thought. I don't like the idea of drawing out unnecessarily the public hearing, but we can, we can talk about that further.
Okay.
Okay, do, do we have a written document regarding the request for the traffic study? Or is it simply a simple motion on our part?
Correct, the latter.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the hiring of AKRF to conduct peer review parking study?
Make the motion, yeah.
Okay, Mike has made the motion, and Brian has seconded.
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, could I just ask a question of Steve?
I was, I was just going to ask if we'd like to discuss this, so go right ahead.
Thank you. Steve, it was really an interesting proposal that was made by the applicant in this case, in the sense that the primary property that they're developing, they also bought other properties around it to allow for better access, traffic flow, et cetera, which is obviously in their best interest, but given everything that's happened on Richards Avenue lately, it was interesting to me to see, and I wonder when we have the peer review traffic study, will they discuss, for lack of a better term, the before and after aspects, do you think?
Right, so they do a couple of different things with the peer review, so first off, they, you know, the basic core component of that is evaluating what was submitted to make sure it meets all requisite industry standards. In this instance, we can ask them, and we've done this on a lot of studies, there's specific elements on a project-by-project basis that we're concerned with, that they can offer more insight on. In this one in particular, they'll, they already flagged that, you know, the initial study needed to go further out in terms of intersection impacts, and they'll also look at, as you indicated, there are additional properties that were added to the consolidated site in order to facilitate access to the site based on where the lights were and to line up the curb cuts, et cetera, so I think that's something that they'll focus on as well, so that they can, if we have specific questions for them to analyze, we can ask them to do that, and also put that back to the applicant as well to, you know, discuss as well.
It sounds like they're asking for intersections farther out is exactly what I was wondering about in the sense that if the, if this place turns out to be as popular as everybody thinks it's going to be, with this, with this traffic flow to get into it and out of it, it would seem like an expanded traffic study would be warranted, and they'll probably answer my questions, but yes, that's basically what I was interested in. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions on the traffic study? All right, if not, let's go to a vote. Steve, let's, I think, I think this calls for a proper voters, opposed to just a hand raised.
Okay, I think you do need to seat, because
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Fernandez is not there, we need to seat two alternates for the.
Okay, I'll do it by who signed in first. Hector and Darius will be seated, and if there's another item requiring a vote, we'll unseat one of them, and we'll have JJ seated. Thank you for reminding me.
Sure. Okay, I'm going to start with, so this will be, you're voting, I'm assuming on a motion to approve, authorize the traffic study, so I'll start with Mr. Williams, since I can't see him.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Baxendale?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Pachus?
Yes.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
And Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Paul. Good night.
All right, let's, let's move to the public hearing. Excuse me, this is 2022-05R/M/SP, Merritt Station, Norwalk LLC, 129 Glover Avenue LLC, 135 Glover Avenue LLC, 156 Glover Avenue LLC, 201 Glover Avenue LLC, Building and Land Technology, North 7, 67, 69, 79, 87, 111, 117, 129, 135, 155, 156, and 201 Glover Avenue and 2 Oakwood Avenue. This evening, we're going to be taking action on only two of the requested changes. One is the zoning map amendment, and the second is the zoning text amendment. The special permit, which is actually the approval to move the project forward, we're going to hold likely until our next meeting. So why don't we begin with the zoning map amendment? Steve, you want to give the background on that?
Yes, certainly, and I don't see Attorney Waters here, so if he pops in, we can add him.
He's on.
He's on? Okay, I don't see him, but that's fine. There he is. Right, so as the chairman indicated, there are technically three applications under consideration. Staff had prepared resolutions for two phases, the first phase being amendment to the zoning map, and the second phase being an amendment to the zoning regulations themselves, and the third phase would be the actual special permit application, which we think if you vote favorably on the first two items, should be held off until a subsequent meeting. Staff provided resolutions on the first two items, and then some draft conditions to consider for the special permit application. The map amendment itself is a consolidation of parcels. Brian, by any chance, could you pull the map up, just so we could take a look? I'm sorry, I probably should have had that out myself, but I didn't, so I apologize. So the map is a consolidation of properties of different zones along the west side of Glover Avenue. Some of that was already zoned, what's called executive office, which is similar to the properties on the east side of Main Ave, the Office Park is located. There are some business two properties in that area, and also some legacy AAA zone properties that were part of the Route 7 right-of-way through that area that are, you know, basically was residual land that the applicant acquired from the state of Connecticut, so they're proposing to consolidate those zones, the consolidation staff feels just makes sense regardless of separately, this is the one application that could stand on its own regardless of the text amendment or the special permit application, just because consolidating the zones in these areas just kind of makes sense as opposed to having the disparate parcels throughout. That's kind of that application in a nutshell. Happy to take any questions on the resolution or questions about the amendment that we have.
Questions for Steve?
And I did send out, I sent out this afternoon, the last couple of emails we did receive prior to the 3:00 PM closure, I didn't receive anything post 3:00 PM.
Steve, it's Tammy. Will we still have the same review of the individual properties as the if and as or the development occurs by doing this?
So the map amendment doesn't really alter the review process of any subsequent applications that comes in, the map amendment itself is just consolidating the zoning around the proposed development site. That's all the map amendment does. And I'm happy to answer that in advance of the text amendment, because that might be a little more applicable question there. The subsequent proposal to the text amendment would allow the master plan as a special permit use, and then any individual applications that come in front of the commission at a later date are proposed to come through at a site plan application level. The commission still has the ability to require a public hearing as part of that application, authorized peer review of the traffic, because then these are big developments, regardless of whether they're done as a whole or done in phases, and also peer review of the architecture and design, which goes hand-in-hand with the design name, so you get multiple bites of the apple as different projects come forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this? Steve, would it be, excuse me, appropriate to read into the record how this complies with the city's plan of development?
Sure, we could do that, I mean, if you want to, it might be more clear maybe to make a motion, and then on the resolution, if that, somebody was so inclined, and then we can read the resolution at that point, if you'd like.
Okay, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the map change? Look, Galen has moved it, is there a second?
A second.
And Richard seconds? Do you want to put up the resolution, please?
Sure.
And while he's doing that, any questions about this? Absolutely going to have to make that larger.
How's that? Is that a little better, or is that?
That's, for my old eyes, that's fine.
All right, I'll do one more. How's that? A little better?
Even better.
Okay, so this is the beginning of the, I'm happy to read the whole thing into the record.
Oh, I'd much prefer that to my reading.
Sure. Okay. Whereas the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission began discussing the project with the applicant in May 2020, whereas the proposed amendments to the building zone map are formally referred to West Cog in the town of Wilton on April 22, 2022, whereas West Cog expressed concern that the parking standard should be in line with recommendations within Public Act 2129, given this is a TOD development in proximity to a train station and the NRVT, and that environmental impacts of the Norwalk, to Norwalk and Long Island Sound should be minimized by reducing impervious surface, whereas the town of Wilton provided a written response expressing concern and recommendations related to project scope, traffic, and building size. Sorry. Whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission, conducted a public hearing on the proposed application on June 2nd, 2022, at which time verbal testimony was received, whereas the commission allowed written communication with the public to be received until June 15, 2000, that should be 22, so I will fix that. Whereas the applicant was given the opportunity to respond to the written comments at the commission's meeting of June 15, 2022, whereas the commission understands that traffic is already a significant concern in the area, whereas the commission hired an outside peer review consultant to assist them with their analysis of impacts on existing and future traffic, whereas the city has consulted with the Connecticut Department of Transportation regarding scheduling and status of several infrastructure, infrastructure projects that will impact the area, whereas the commission has determined that the master plan, if approved, should be approved in three phases based on specific infrastructure improvements. Sorry, I got to scroll down. Whereas the commission finds there is sufficient capacity when the, within the wastewater treatment plant to accommodate this development and other development presently under consideration by the commission, whereas the commission finds that there is adequate public water available, and that water uses, usage has declined throughout through more efficient fixture, and the upgrade and replacement of old and leaky infrastructure, and that water usage, as determined by the utilities, is forecast to decline in their latest forecast. Whereas the commission considered all testimony received and closed the hearing on June 15, 2022, whereas the city recognizes the value and importance of the Merritt 7 office towers to the city, and that it is the highest concentration of Class A office space in the city, and contains numerous significant and important tenants, not only to Norwalk, but also for the state of Connecticut. Whereas the commission has determined that the prepared amendments to the building zone regulations are consistent with the recommendations with the 2019 citywide plan, specifically Chapter 3, Goal 3, Strategy A, Action 6, which recommends continue implementation of transit-oriented development, TOD, and a range of mixed-use opportunities for sustainable live-work-play communities in the city. This includes approving TOD projects in East Norwalk, implementing the pedestrian bridge and Merritt 7 station project, and TOD projects in Sono and mixed-use clusters along commercial arteries. Chapter 4, Goal 1, Strategy B, Action 2 recommends, as part of a rewrite of the zoning code, establish traditional design standards for commercial and mixed-use areas and corridors on the edges of traditional single-family neighborhoods. Chapter 4, Goal 1, Strategy C, Action 1 recommends, continue to encourage the development of vibrant transit-oriented districts within walking district of the South Norwalk, East Norwalk, and Merritt 7 train stations. Housing near transit is important for Norwalk's economic development and revitalization goals. At the same time, the city should monitor housing markets and support these districts with urban design and programming initiatives. Chapter 4, Goal 1, Strategy D, Action 2 recommends, continue to meet or exceed the state's 10% goal for affordable housing. Chapter 4, Goal 1, Strategy G, Action 3 recommends, continue the inclusionary zoning program. Chapter 4, Goal 2, Strategy A, Action 3 recommends, support improvements and design standards that encourage walking and biking, access to city and neighborhood destinations such as village, retail areas, parks, and schools. Chapter 10, Goal 1, Strategy B, Action 1 recommends, make land use decisions that support walking, bicycling, and public transit use. Incorporate multimodal considerations into comprehensive land use policies to guide decision-making. Chapter 10, Goal 1, Strategy D, Action 3 recommends, encourage pedestrian-friendly design features in street improvement projects. Features include sidewalks with adequate width, street trees, pedestrian scale lighting, clearly marked crosswalks, on-street parking with corner bold corner bold outs to reduce crossing distances, bollards, public spaces, gardens, outdoor furniture, art, and interesting architectural details. Chapter 10, Goal 2, Strategy A, Action 1 recommends, right-size parking requirements and parking ratios for non-residential and multifamily land uses. Wow, sorry, it's jumping. And I think we're at the end here. Chapter 12, Figure 12-4, future land use map area proposed for mixed-use center. Medium-to-high-density office, residential, retail, hotel, and entertainment areas that create vibrant 18-hour, seven-day-a-week live-work-play environments. Small-scale boutique manufacturing, clean tech, and artisan space are also allowed uses provided they meet performance and design standards. Accessible by transit, bus, and train, as well as by pedestrians and bicyclists, walkability improvements should be integral to all development proposals. Wall Street West Avenue, South Norwalk, and Merritt 7, and at a smaller scale, East Norwalk TOD District, to be delineated through a planning study in 2019. All right, and there's the map. Oops, sorry, I thought we were done, apparently not. Chapter 12, Goal 1, Strategy A, Action 1 recommends, direct future development in Norwalk's urban core, village districts, and corridors through redevelopment and infill. Promote walkable mixed-use development in the established Wall Street West Ave, Sono, and Merritt 7 areas, in the future East Norwalk TOD area, and in key activity centers along the Route 1 and Main Ave, Main Street, commercial corridors. Promote transit-oriented development near train stations and high-frequency bus stops, emphasizing walkability and transit-supported densities and uses. Chapter 12, Goal 2, Strategy A, Action 3 recommends, improve the public realm with village districts and activity centers, with design standard for sidewalks, street trees, pedestrian lighting, bicycle racks, seating, signage, and public art. Chapter 12, Goal 2, Strategy B, Action 2 recommends, as part of the zoning code rewrite, create zoning with design standards to achieve desired outcomes for commercial and mixed-use projects as redevelopment occurs. Chapter 12, Goal 2, Strategy B, Action 4 recommends, study commercial corridors to identify priority activity centers for mixed-use zoning and cluster developments. And that is the end.
Well, thank you for that. Maybe, maybe for the second action, we should have Brian do the reading, give you a rest. All right, we, we have heard the resolution. All those in favor, Steve, you want to do a roll call count?
Sure, if there was any other questions or discussion, maybe we could hit that in there as well. Happy to, let me just stop share for a second. Okay. And for seating for this one, Mr. Chairman?
I beg your pardon?
Just want to know who's seated for this particular.
Um, we're going to drop. I'm, I'm looking for a face.
You brought me.
You're going on.
No, we're missing.
Nope, we have everybody. Just Hector's here, Darius and JJ.
Oh, okay, Darius, I see Darius now, I didn't see him before. So we will drop Darius and bring in JJ.
Okay. All right, so I guess you're voting in favor of the resolution. I'll start with Ms. Jordan Byron. Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Baxendale?
Yes.
Mr. Pachus?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
And Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
I believe that is everybody.
That is, and that makes it unanimous. All right, thank you all for that. This has been a very long time in coming. Our second item is action on 2022-05R, and that is the building, building zone regulations. Can I have a motion to approve? Was that you, Galen, with your hand up? Or Galen moves, there a second?
A second.
Okay, that was Hector?
That was Nick.
Oh, okay, I apologize. All right, let's put up the resolution as I ask if there are any questions. Steve, you want to give background on this?
Certainly, this is the second item, as I mentioned, that you'd be taking action on, so Certainly, this is the second item, as I mentioned, that you'd be taking action on. So. The applicant has proposed, you know, several amendments to the zoning regulations and with the idea being. That they would like to create, you know, within the regulations, the possibility of having. You know, master plan development over there, you know, pretty significantly sized parcel, which I believe is over fourteen acres. Um, and the idea would be that. There would be several phases to the project. And it would allow them to, you know, through the consolidation of the zoning that you just approved. It would allow them to build at TOD TOD density that we allow. Pretty much through most of the urban core of Norwalk. It does allow for some taller buildings up to fifteen stories. Which are already allowed in this area. Uh, under certain circumstances, so. Uh, that's also part of the request as well. There are recommendations within that and requirements as part of the zoning text related to. Sustainability, also in terms of the amount of public space available in terms of and the amount of open space, green space that's included with the development. Parking is reduced and brought in line with the standards that we allow in other TOD areas. The workforce housing is brought into conformance with. What is required by other developments within the city, other multifamily developments within the city. And and the special permit itself comes with numerous criteria that the applicant has to meet. In terms of the design standards and a lot of those relate back to the special permit. Which as I believe you don't, I believe you're not voting on tonight, but you'll be. Uh, reviewing the draft conditions that were kicked around to just see what. You know, was appropriate and what might need some further tweaking before you take any action on that particular piece of it.
Uh, Steve, just full disclosure. In the event that we were not to approve the special permit. Uh, could we revoke this action? That we're taking this evening?
So your scenario is you you've approved the map amendment and you proved the text amendment. And ultimately you deny the special permit application. Then could you go back and? Revoke that? I don't know if you could revoke it. I think you could. It's possible to reopen the vote within the meeting. It's. Not something I've seen, so I don't know my comfort level with saying yes or no. I think you could always go back and. Have another amendment to the zoning regulations and remove that text you proved that you certain.
Okay, I just don't want uh taking this action. To force us. To take the other action. I'm not saying we're not going to take the other action, or we are going to take the other action. But I I don't want us in the awkward position of having to vote on that last. Critical piece. Uh, 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 under the pressure of knowing that. It may not be possible for us to have a no vote.
Yeah, I think you you'd have the option to like, it would be awkward, but I think you have.
Okay. Um. Uh, any questions of Steve at this point? All right, if not, Steve, can we have Brian read this into the record?
If he wants to, I just I just saw something on this. The whereas clause I'm pointing out here that. The I would. Ask that the comment that was incorporated from the first whereas be indicated here as well regarding West Cog's comment. I didn't. It should have been copied and pasted down here.
Okay.
And then you just have to fix the. Next one, we have June, next one, two thousand two to two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah. Yeah, Brian, do you want? I'm happy to read again if you if you.
I could read, that's fine.
Thanks, Brian.
Uh, whereas the planning commission and the zoning commission began discussing the project with the applicant in May twenty twenty. Whereas the proposed amendments to the building zone map were formally referred to West Cog in the town of Wilton on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Whereas no comments were received from West Cog. Whereas the town of Wilton provided a written response expressing concern and recommendations related to project scope, traffic and building size. Whereas the planning and zoning commission, the commission conducted a public hearing on the proposed application on June second, twenty twenty-two. At which time verbal testimony was received. Whereas the commission allowed written communications from the public to be received until June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the applicant was given an opportunity to respond to the written comments at the commission's meeting of June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the commission understands that traffic is already a significant concern in the area. Whereas the commission hired an outside peer review consultant to assist them with their analysis of impacts on existing and future traffic. Whereas the city has consulted with the Connecticut Department of Transportation regarding scheduling and status of several infrastructure projects that will impact the area. Whereas the commission has determined that the master plan, if approved, should be approved in three phases based on specific infrastructure improvements. Whereas the commission finds that there is sufficient capacity within the wastewater treatment plant to accommodate this development and other development presently under consideration by the commission. Whereas the commission finds that there is adequate public water available and that water usage has declined through the more efficient fixture and the upgrade fixtures and the upgrade. And replacement of old and leaky infrastructure that the water. That water usage as determined by the utilities is forecast to decline in their latest forecasts. Whereas the commission considered all testimony received and closed the hearing on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the city recognizes the value and importance of the merit seven office towers to the city and that it is the highest concentration of class A office space in the city. And contains numerous significant and important tenants, not only to Norwalk, but also for the state of Connecticut. Whereas the commission has determined that the prepared amendments. To the building zone regulations are consistent with the recommendations within with the twenty nineteen citywide plan specifically. Uh, chapter three, goal three, strategy A, action six recommends. Continue implementation of transit oriented development TOD and arrange of mixed use opportunities for sustainable live work play communities in the city. This includes approving TOD projects in East Norwalk, implementing the pedestrian bridge and merit seven station project. And TOD projects in Sono and mixed use clusters along commercial arterials. Uh, chapter four, goal one, strategy B, action two recommends as part of a rewrite of the zoning code, establish transition design standards for commercial and mixed use areas and corridors on the edges of. Traditional single family neighborhoods. Chapter four, goal one, strategy C, action one recommends continue to encourage the development of vibrant transit oriented districts within walking distance of the South Norwalk, East Norwalk and merit seven train stations. Housing near transit is important for Norwalk's economic development and revitalization goals. At the same time, the city should monitor housing markets and support these districts with urban design and programming initiatives. Chapter four, goal one, strategy D, action two recommends to continue to meet or exceed the state's ten percent goal for affordable housing. Chapter four, goal one, strategy D, action two recommends continue the inclusionary zoning program. Chapter four, goal two, strategy A, action three recommends support improvements and design standards that encourage walking and biking access to city and neighborhood destinations such as village, retail areas, parks and schools. Chapter ten, goal one, strategy B, action one recommends make land use decisions that support walking, bicycling and public transit use. Incorporate multimodal considerations into comprehensive land use policies to guide decision making. Uh, chapter ten, goal one, strategy D, action three recommends to encourage pedestrian friendly design features and street improvement projects. Features include sidewalks with adequate width, street trees, pedestrian scale lighting, clearly marked crosswalks on street parking with corner bold bouts to reduce crossing distances, bollards, public spaces, gardens, outdoor furniture, art and interesting architectural details. Thinking one too far, Steve. Got chapter ten, goal two, strategy A, action one recommends right size parking requirements and parking ratios for non residential and multifamily land uses. Chapter twelve, goal one, strategy A, action one recommends direct future development to Norwalk's urban core, village districts and corridors through redevelopment and infill. Promote walkable mixed use development in the established Wall Street, West Ave, Sono and merit seven areas. In the future, East Norwalk TOD area and in key activity areas along the Route One and Main Ave, Main Street, or commercial corridors. Promote transit oriented development TOD near rail stations and high frequency bus stops emphasizing walkability and transit supportive densities and uses. Chapter twelve, goal two, strategy A, action three recommends improve the public realm within village districts and activity centers. With design standards for sidewalk, street trees, pedestrian lighting, bicycle racks, seating, signage and public art. Chapter twelve, goal two, strategy B, action two recommends as part of the zoning code rewrite, create zoning. With design standards to achieve desired outcomes for commercial and mixed use projects as redevelopment occurs. Uh, chapter twelve, goal two, strategy B, action four recommends study commercial corridors to identify priority activity centers. For mixed use zoning and clustered redevelopment. That's it unless you want me to read the therefore be resolved.
No, I don't think that's necessary. Having heard. Uh, the resolution again, any final questions for the staff? All right, if not, let's. Vote on this by. Um, I guess we. We ought to do a roll call on this.
Sure, would you like to change the seating just of alternates again?
Uh, sure, we'll move Mr. Patches out and we'll move JJ back in.
Okay. So.
Darius.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, Darius and JJ are seated.
That's right.
Uh, Mr. Cantor? Is that it? I'm sorry. Was that a yes, Nick?
Oh, yes, yes.
Sure. Mr. Williams? With, yeah, so you you're you were commuted, Darius.
Yes.
I thought he wasn't seated.
No, Darius and Mr. Williams and you are both seated. So that was affirmative from Mr. Cantor and Mr. Williams. Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote yes, but before I do, I just want to say that I know. All of the other commissioners as well have read. All of the letters that were written in. I have been to this project site two or three times. I was. Telling my wife this morning that I just couldn't get over the fact that it was the first time I ever saw a project under construction look like the architectural renditions with people walking dogs and. Riding bicycles. This is an incredibly complicated process, and I think by making this its own. Um, district with the ability to. Uh, vote on each individual phase as it comes up, each one being tied to improved infrastructure. Um, is the best that we could do for the city in Norwalk, the best that we could do for the residents surrounding it. Um, and I just hope that everybody will realize at some point that it's a win win situation. I was a little disappointed to see Attorney Waters' response to some of the letters that came in because. Um, I wanted to say some of those things and I didn't want it to sound like I was copying him. But the infrastructure there is done, and I would have to believe that the. Construction that's going to continue over the next the six or seven or eight or nine years is not going to be as intrusive as it was. When the road was dug up and the sewer was put in, the water lines were put in. So that's a long way saying yes, but I vote yes.
Miss, Miss Jordan Byron?
I also vote yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Backsendale?
Yes.
Ms. Langalis?
I would also like to make a comment to kind of piggybacking on Mr. Rowena. I too read and took very seriously the concerns of the residents that live in the condominium associations in that neighborhood. And. I don't think that. We all can appreciate having seven years of construction in a very close proximity to where we might live, you know, if you live in a single family neighborhood, you have one house occasionally here and there, it's disruptive enough, but to have this going on. Over the course of many years, I think is very disruptive and I think some, I don't know what we can do to help those people, but I think it's important. I also think the traffic and fixing the Route Seven connector. Quagmire, the Glover intersection, Gris Mill, Main Avenue, at both ends, it's so bad now, and if it doesn't get fixed. It's just going to be worse and. The city and the state and and I think BLT all need to work together to make those intersections. More friendly, both to the cars that need to get through there, the amount of volume. And and pedestrians and cyclists and the path, and I think people have good intentions, but I think the city really needs to hold the developer. Responsible, and they have nothing to do with the. ASMIL business, but they're expanding their employee base by a thousand people if what the article that was recently in the news is accurate. And you can barely get through that intersection by the DMV on a good day, so I think we really have to do everything that we can to make. The infrastructure. Better and work for all parties involved. So I will vote yes, but I have some reservations.
Okay, and Mr. Scholman?
Um, when we began this process back in two thousand twenty, I indicating indicated that it. It it looked like a wonderful and exciting opportunity. And it also scared the heck out of me. And I I don't think that I've changed my mind about that. I I I think this potentially holds great promise for the city. But it absolutely needs to be done the right way. And I particularly like to thank Bob for. The work he has done. In helping us put together the design standards. Uh, I think if this project can adhere to those design standards. It will be a project that whether it's the first stage or the third stage. That not only we will be proud of, but that BLT would be proud of as well. Um, and with that, I I also vote yes. Steve, I believe that that is unanimous approval. You are muted.
Yes, I believe that was unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have one more step to take on that and we're going to defer that at least until our. Special meeting on the twenty eighth or the first July meeting. So with that, we'll move on.
Well, Mr. Chairman, would it be, would it be a good idea to go over the conditions or take any questions from the commission while you have also you have Attorney Waters present to? Address any of those, we can go back. I mean, I think there's a few things still unresolved, small things. I know you had some questions about some language within the design manual as well, so if we want to make any. Changes or edits now would be a good time to have that discussion.
Um, okay, then let's do that. Do I need to go back to my notes or did you take notes of my notes?
I have notes. I know you had question. I I so the the draft that. Got sent out and I believe it was. Yesterday, maybe or Tuesday, which we had some edits based on my conversations with the applicant as well as conversations with some commissioners, just on some questions that they had. So I incorporated those and there was some red text that was sent out, and I know you had some specific questions related to. Language within the design manual itself, so I think if we want to make any changes or edits. We should confer on those now and get agreement to the extent possible. We still have. A couple of different, you know, a couple of weeks to. Make edits or make changes and you can do so before you vote, but it would be good if you had. Questions you wanted to ask Attorney Waters before you wrap that piece up, it would be good to get that confirmed. questions you wanted to ask Attorney Waters before you wrap that piece up. It would be good to get that confirmed now.
All right. Well, one of the, one of the first questions went to and I think you addressed this in your revised language, and that was the height of the buildings. Although it seems fairly clear what the height of the buildings are going to be, it also looked as if the language might permit you to do all 15-story buildings. And I don't, that certainly never was our intent. And from our conversations, I don't believe that's your intent either. I think we simply need to confirm that the heights that we've agreed to during these discussions are the heights of the buildings that BLT intends to build.
So just pulled up the the draft resolution. If there's questions on any, any of the conditions.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, the thing that Lou just said, where is that on the?
That would have been red text. There we go, number seven.
There you go.
No, bacon on that.
But Nick, to answer Nick, to answer your question, there is nothing specific in the text that states that. It's simply implied in the text.
Brian, while we're going over this, could you pull up the, Brian Baker, can you pull up the master? The not the master plan, the design manual. So once we get through this piece, we could go back and look at that. Because we have to make some final edits.
I have to be, I'm a little uncomfortable with, but people thought about being overly restrictive right now in the I don't know any other zone that we've done or any other plan where we said sort of locked them in at the start, if it's in, in, but I don't know what other people's views are. That feels very restrictive. I don't know.
Nick, could you please repeat what you said at the beginning because you were cutting in and out on my reception?
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now better?
Yes.
Yes, I can. Thank you.
I'm just curious what other people feel to that. I'm not aware of anywhere else where that prescriptive at this point versus allowing what people want to build within the context of the zone.
Well, Nick, we're actually at the end of the process. And what, what we approve in all likelihood is what will be built. And when, when
That's not necessarily true, though, in the sense of the within the design guidelines.
When the folks came to us for the developments in South Norwalk, there were very strict restrictions on the heights of the building. And in effect, we're, we're doing the same thing here. It's being done in a different way because we're working from a design manual rather than from strict zoning regulations. But I see it as exactly the same thing.
I see it exactly like Nick is saying, that you know, we've, we've approved a master plan. And the thing that is the most significant to me is that every time a phase comes in, whoever is going to be on this planning and zoning commission has to approve it. I think that if I remember correctly, I age out of being a zoning member in two years. So most of this project is going to be done without my input. But what I'm thinking right now is that if they have to come in in three different phases, and as Attorney Waters had pointed out that, that many of the hearings, you know, that if somebody wanted a whole building for themselves or somebody wanted a hotel, they wanted the flexibility to do that. And it would seem to me that if they came in in phase two, for example, and said, you know, okay, if we go from 12 stories to 15 stories, we could decrease the footprint by such and such an amount, and now the park will be three acres instead of one acre. I mean, that's something I think that whoever's sitting on the commission at that time would want to consider in the permit application.
I think that condition seven allows that. I think that
Oh, I do, too. That's what I'm saying. I think it does allow that.
So we should leave it the way it is, is what you're saying, right?
That's, I believe so.
No, no. Dick, what it doesn't, because on the master plan, it says shall not exceed the number of stories indicated on the master plan. Let's look at building 1.1, right? The master plan for 1.1 says, I believe, I'm trying to find the slide here, says five stories. That would mean that 1.1A could not be more than five stories by how I read seven. Is that correct, Steve?
Yeah, but Nick, I think that's the same language that you would put on any other special permit application. So think about something that you approved in South Norwalk where they, they came in, got an approval for a four-story building. Then, then they started doing their design a little further and said, you know what, we'd like to, you picked up some residual land, we'd like to make it a five-story building. They'd have to come back and to you guys and get that modification. I think that's what the same, same condition.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
May I just ask a question? Is, would there be a difference between an amendment to the master plan versus a site plan or special apartment approval? It, to me, it sounds like amending the master plan is maybe a bigger deal than site plan or special permit approval, which would normally occur building by building?
The special, the master plan in essence is part of the special permit. So it'd be, if you got approval for a special permit to do X, but you want to change X to X plus three, you have to come back and get approval on that special permit.
Yeah, I would point a couple of things out. One is that one, one of, one of the complaints we heard from the neighbors was about the height of the building. And leaving a decision to the developer, if he chooses to go higher, is of concern to me, number one. Number two, as you go higher, closer away, away from that the intersection with the new Route 7. The land, there's a difference in the topography, and it may well be that taller buildings will impinge on the view of the buildings behind them. And that, that concerns me as well. I mean, these are going to be, as a group, the tallest buildings in Norwalk. And to allow them to be basically a wall of all 15-story buildings is never what I thought I was approving.
But, Mr. Chairman, don't you, don't you agree that it's, it's not the developer's decision to do that? It might be the developer's decision to propose that. But it certainly isn't going to be his decision as the developer's decision to do that. It's going to be the planning and zoning commission's decision whether to allow him to do that.
Yes. Exactly. And, and oh, you keep in mind that they're 15-story buildings are really no taller than the merit one buildings. Right? I mean, the merit seven buildings. You know, 15-story sounds like a lot, but the merit seven buildings are built on these on top of the parking garages. And so they're really essentially 15 stories, and we've gotten used to that, and so we're not upset by it. And I think that's an important thing for us to keep in mind, that it's not like these are the tallest buildings in Norwalk. They're no taller than what already exists in merit seven.
I don't think this condition handcuffs the applicant at all. I think they, the applicant has proposed a master plan. On that master plan, they've indicated as, as of today, how they see these buildings laying out in terms of their scope and their scale. If in the future they decide, you know what, we want to swap out this building for that building, this condition says you have to come back and get change the master plan to reflect that. So I don't think it
And changing the master plan, though, requires a tech, what's the process to change the master plan?
It would be, it'd be a special, it's basically a special permit modification would probably be a public hearing, and they have to make their case as to why this is the appropriate change.
Gotcha. Okay. Seems like there's a path forward there.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a couple paths. Just going back a little bit, the applicant and I had exchanged some text around conditions two and three, which are basically similar conditions, are just talking about the phasing. The text immediately next to number two is what I proposed. This is somewhat to, I don't know if they completely agree with how I've phrased this here, but it's a little more of, to their kind of concern and their point is that, you know, they want to be able to start construction and get going prior to, you know, having everything in place with DOT because the DOT process can take a while. While they're in agreement, they can't occupy the building before the particular phases improvements are done. I understand the point. I think maybe the first part of the language is a little restrictive. My only concern would be going forward, say that they, you know, we allow them to start work on that second or that third phase, and the DOT project stalls and their units are ready to be occupied and they're built and they want to occupy them, but then we're saying, sorry, you've got to wait. And they're screaming, well, we have these buildings built and we can't occupy them, and it's not our fault. That kind of puts you guys in a, in a tough spot. That's my concern with changing the word.
Is in the, is the red your new proposed language?
Yeah, so
There's some following? Because if I'm reading this, if I'm reading A correctly, all that you're saying is we preserve the right to occupy, and that's still fine. And then you're saying it could be a tough spot because the buildings are built, but we're still saying, no, you can't move in there?
Right.
Why is that a tough spot?
Well, because, I mean, it just puts you a little, a little pressure on you. I mean, we have many instances in this project and others where we'll issue partial certificates of occupancy. So say they have 100 spaces available to, which fits out to a certain number of units, but in this case, they might have all their units done and not be able to use the property because of things outside of their control and outside of our control. So you'll, you know, it's just something to keep in your back of your mind.
Yeah, but, but Steve, that is, that they, they, they make that decision at their peril. They could wait, for example, until the project is two-thirds completed and improve their chances that they can occupy upon completion. Or they could wait until, again, their choice, they can wait until the improvements have been completed or very near complete before moving forward with the project.
David, was this?
This, this, this gives us, the city of Norwalk, a little bit of protection from having to provide a CO when, when the construction work on the improvements is not completed.
Steve, was this negotiated between you and Attorney Waters?
No, sort of. So the condition two and three in the, without the highlights, that's the initial text that I sent to the commission as well as the applicant.
Right.
I had a follow-up conversation with Attorney Waters, and that's what I crafted, A, the two different, 2A and 3A as alternates to two and three. In a follow-up exchange, he, Attorney Waters expressed concern that tying the submittal of the permits until, you know, a 50% or other timeline threshold wasn't appropriate. They'd like to be able to submit the, you know, submit phase two once phase one is done and then not get the CO until the phase two improvements are done. So those are kind of two options.
So that, that was basically something that the applicant has, has agreed to right now, that?
I, I think he's agreed that they will not occupy the phase two buildings until the phase two work is done.
So what I'm trying to say is, is that if, if, if the applicant has been involved in this language, and were I still sitting on the zoning commission at the time this was completely done and the road work wasn't done yet, I wouldn't have a problem at all saying, sorry, you don't get a CO until the roads are done.
Yeah, I think the way just A is written, and that's like the piece of text I have here, they, they would prefer this 50% of the estimated construction time portion of that get removed because they're saying that's a little bit ambiguous and a little difficult to determine and is a little more beyond anyone's control because we don't know what the timeline might be or if they can keep to the timeline, etc. I think they're fine with the last part of the, the condition where the occupancy is tied to this certificate.
Well, that, that's the important part. And I, you know, I think that Louis is absolutely correct that the risk is on them. I understand it's a gamble, you know, you don't want to waste the time, but you may get, you may get to the end of the race and you didn't win.
So
I don't have a problem with that language.
So, so the question is then, in order to kind of get, put a ribbon around that one, is whether you're okay with them starting the second phase before the improvements are complete. That's really the crux of it.
The ending is the important part. If they agree that they don't get a CO until the infrastructure work is completed by the state or whoever is doing it, then it doesn't really matter to me when they start.
Okay, I mean, I'm happy to rework.
That's just me. That's all.
I agree.
Mr. Rowena, because it, the road work is so important in this project. I don't think we can say it enough. So I would say, you know, they can start it when they want, but when they get the CO, that puts pressure on them. It it's us put pressure. I know you can't pressure the state into completing these projects, but maybe it, you know, behooves us to keep in better communication with the state and moving projects along. And maybe BLT has some influence there, but
Steve, my bigger, or sorry, Tammy.
No, that's okay. Like, I'm trying to think of Steve, some other projects where this might have been the situation. Do you, can you give us an example? I don't know, Waypoint was just on a regular city road, but have we had other examples of this where COs have not been granted until infrastructure work has been done?
Yeah, I mean, that happens on every project, but, but not, but it's a lot of times it's infrastructure that they're undertaking, or worst case, it's the city undertaking. So there's a little more synergy between the projects. This is, you're relying on an outside agency that we have no, to your point, we have no ability to mandate that they do something right away. It's more of a political pressure than it is a any other kind of jurisdictional pressure we can apply.
And are all the road improvements here, the cost incurred by the state?
That would be to be determined. There probably would, I think that, you know, the state would probably try to leverage federal funds if possible, but that I really am guessing at that point.
Because then that makes me really nervous that it'll never happen. And then we'll have this huge project sitting there with bad infrastructure.
I believe that the first phase, though, is already funded. That, that's on the books. That's a project at the state level. The interchange in Glover Avenue Bridge improvements. The second phase and third phase are a different story.
But at our last meeting, I'm not sure who presented the slide. Maybe it was Attorney Waters where it showed Glover Avenue curving to the west and coming into the intersection where the connector ends right now at the light. And that was the first we'd seen of that. And you know, is that just an idea? Is that just to get us to buy into this project? You know, I don't know.
That, that's a concept that's maybe under consideration at this point, but it's not a project and it's not a design that the state's technically working on. technically working off of, as far as I know.
Okay, but that we own Glover Avenue. It has nothing to do with the state. They just have the connector and Gris Mill and Main Avenue are all state roads. Right?
I believe so.
Well, maybe Main Avenue isn't a state road.
No, that's state up through there.
Oh, yeah, it is. That's right. Yes.
So so if you're in agreement, I can tweak two and three to incorporate the two different alternatives into a new condition and I'll send that back out before your next meeting on this application.
That sounds good.
Let's keep on. Would be, you would be deleting that fifty percent?
Yes, yeah, I'll I'll incorporate the first phase, part of the first condition with the second condition and come up with something.
Um, before we move forward, I have one other question on that that point. It it looks like we're saying the Gris Mill pedestrian improvement is a function of phase three. Is that right?
The, are we talking about the sidewalk?
The sidewalk, yeah.
Um, no, I think there's a separate condition on that.
There's a separate condition?
Yeah, I believe so.
What number was that?
I believe, Nick, that that phase one.
Yes, I do too.
Um, and I I'm just going to hit this one quick while we're here. The town, the town square is ten thousand. I had twenty. I was guessing that it was twenty, but it was tens, just to point that out. Um. Steve, it's number twenty six. Yeah. Thank you. Just got there.
Okay, great.
And then um while we're on this page, I think it's pretty close to the end. Um, condition twenty two is one where uh we we're talking about the ceiling height of the ground floor. The applicant would prefer uh ten feet versus fifteen. I suggested fifteen based off of um prior planning studies. One was East Norwalk, and I think one were some was West Ave, Wall Street. The applicant indicates that they feel ten is more appropriate in this area, given the small size of the of commercial spaces. So I think at the end of the day, it's really your call, which whatever you feel is more appropriate for for that.
Well, I would suggest that you go with the lower ceiling height so that ultimately the building is lower. Is this is this one of the fifteen story buildings?
It it potentially could be.
Might not sound like much, but you know, five feet's five feet.
Uh, Steve, I would suggest a compromise at about twelve feet, reason being um that uh if it's a restaurant, you might want that additional height um just for the scale of the restaurant.
Okay, I I imagine that we're not going to quibble about three feet for that, so we'll that's fine. Um, and condition twenty three, I don't believe the applicant has any issue with that. It's a little bit of an ambiguous condition and which might be difficult for us to enforce down the road, but I threw it in there as a consideration. So I unless anybody has a problem, we recommend leaving it in.
Well, the applicant's going to have to rent these apartments and he's uh, it seems to me they they would want to make it as attractive as possible.
I noticed, Steve, we don't have the condition that we've put in some of the bigger projects recently about maintenance and upkeep of buildings.
Right, those will go into, I I I'd flag that one, but I think that's more appropriate when we get into the site plan phase and that would that would tag on to each application that comes in later on.
Oh, we can, we can attach those at at the site plan level?
Yes.
Okay, I thought they were only, they could only be attached at a special permit.
No, they could, they could be site planning. I mean, we, if you wanted to include that one, I'm fine including it. I just thought it would be more suitable there, but I it's fine for me either way.
I would include it's worth covering. I don't have to remember about any pre-site plan unless there's any contention to that.
Okay, I'll add that one in. Um, I think that's it for this phase. The only I can't type. I know, I know what I'm doing. Um.
Tricky work.
Yeah. Um, if we could, Brian, if you could pull up the design manual and then if there was any, I I think ideally if you get to the stage where you're going to take action on the master plan. It would be good to have the design manual buttoned up. Um, I know the chairman had a couple of questions and I know this got a draft indication on it. It'd be good to have a final date and go from there. Um, and then look at the whole package, special permits, uh, the master plan and the design manuals.
And I I think I only had two other uh questions that I note in my copy of the manual. Brian, can you go to page five? Yeah, it's uh, can you go back uh to the middle? That's perfect. Um. It's my understanding through Steve, I I I didn't I didn't speak to the developer about this. But on um item eight four, that second uh sentence. Um, where um uh if you change the floor plate, uh, you can increase um the height by two stories. Um. It was my understanding that developer is not particularly interested in that, and I would simply take that language out uh regarding changing the floor plate. Um, I really don't want to see a seventeen story building. And uh on that same page, B two, there's uh an allowance for an additional story uh at the bottom under two. Uh, if this method of or uh providing boldly sculptured form is used, allowed building heights may be increased by one story. I I think that ought to come out as well.
Something else I just thought of, Mr. Chairman, if if you, if it helps at all. Um, you could leave that language, but then put a clause, but but shall not exceed fifteen stories. So that way, if it's like a a shorter building, they could still have that ability to go up. But then um the fifteen stories would still be the maximum cap on a bill.
I I would agree with that.
Floor plate is, that's more of a technical, the floor plate. Can you give us a technical description of that, please?
So that's basically the the floor. So it's the fifteenth floor. So that that square footage of that air, that say there was a two thousand square foot fifteenth floor, they'd have to reduce that by sixty percent. That makes sense.
But not the height, just the um surface area, the floor.
Yes, Brian, if you scroll up, you can see of what it's not, probably not sixty percent.
Like that, see? I mean, it's, you know, it's not like it's going to be a big block of a building. It's just being able to uh add design elements.
Exactly.
But that's just an example. That's not what.
No, it says they deeply reduced, you know, uh. Uh, let's see, where does it say that? It talks about a.
Talks about ten percent in I or one, sorry, A one under two, A one.
And Steve, I would agree, I would agree with that as well. That um doing it for buildings that are not fifteen stories.
Okay, I I can work with um, I think Bob's captured that. He's wrapped his head around that already, so we'll we'll double, we'll confirm and we'll make some final edits. If there's anything else, anybody wants to see changed, um, let us know, or there's questions, we can wrap that in and discuss it and before you guys take any action on the uh on the master plan component.
Nick, uh, something I thought uh you might want to take a look at on uh page nine. Uh, under one roofs. I'd just be interested in uh your feelings about that. A and B.
I mean, I think it's exciting to to put the the minimum on their debt, especially B to something. Um, I don't know if there's room to increase that a little bit from fifteen percent to twenty five percent or something like that, but um I don't know what's practical with mechanics and whatnot, but that would be my only question on that, Steve, if there's a little room there. If how do we get to fifteen? It's a little more, we think could be more exciting for this city there for their the green or their green movement.
Yeah, I I can have a discussion with the applicant, see if there's some, I I think that maybe there's some room there, but we have, you know, it's it's hard to speculate on an individual building based on layout and the tendency. But I I agree, if there's room, we should, it should be the maximum extent possible regardless of of the number.
I would, I would suggest thirty percent. Good suggestion, Nick.
Okay, uh, that does it for uh, I believe for the comments that I had. Does anyone else have comments?
I'd just like to ask again, um Attorney Waters and comparing your fifteen story building with what exists over on the original Merit seven. The topography that you're starting from, if I'm not mistaken, from just having driven around seems a lot higher to me and I could be wrong, but so I feel like your fifteen story building is actually going to be taller than what is existing currently. Is that true?
Commissioner, with respect, the public hearing is closed, so I'm not sure that I should really be speaking with you guys at this point.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
Sorry.
But I will point out that there are some sections that we have submitted that are of record that you may want to look at.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna try to navigate to, Tammy, and I can.
Let me direct my question to Steve Clef.
I will. Steve, another question, can I ask?
Yeah, I'm gonna look this up and see if I can find that.
Okay.
The cross section of the rendering, then I'll pull them up.
Okay.
Can we ask Bob questions at this point, Steve, or is that?
Uh, technically, no, just I think if since the hearing is closed. I think it's probably safe and yeah, I think. Can you guys see that? I'll try to find um and I don't know which drawing reflects what your question was. Okay, so can you see the numbers? So the numbers indicate where the um the different advantage points for where the the drawings were taken from. So number five is from Main Ave looking across the current uh building B of the curb. So that would give you a little sense. Um, three would be looking or maybe even four would be looking from um the connector across the existing uh Oakwood Ave properties across the kind of the middle phase of the development on Glover and the towers would be in the background. So I could go to I go through all of them if you like, but I think one, three and four would probably get at what you're asking, Tammy.
Uh, Steve, I think she's also asking about the topography. As I understand it, the places these buildings will be built is actually lower than the the ground on which the Merit seven buildings are built. Is that correct? Or don't you?
The grade, yeah. I I don't have the topo map to to answer that definitively, but I for a hundred percent, but the property does rise somewhat, especially on the north end, but a lot of that is after the proposed development site as well, though. But so what? Let's go through, look at one, three and four. So one is kind of looking from the connector southeast. Three is looking from the connector across the curb northeast and four is looking from the connector across Oakwood to the northeast. So I think if you can remember one, three and four on the map, that'll so that's one.
And is the dot, the orange dotted line through the building, what floor is that?
I think that's the eleventh floor.
Okay.
This is two, which we weren't looking at. That's a different view, but I think three and the next two are probably what we were talking about. So here's the connector looking um to the northeast. There's the buildings the north end of the site. And these are the existing buildings behind.
We can't see them in conjunction with the buildings, the existing buildings on Main Avenue?
Yeah, that at least when this perspective, when it shows the trees up, that you cannot see them.
Yeah, you can't see the existing buildings on Main Avenue, but we can see buildings uh the second and third phase of the new of the new project.
Yeah, it it depends on where you are. Like, if you are if you are in the far northern portion of the site, the northern building's gonna be, oops, sorry. Um, if you're on the far north portion of the site, the third phase and the beginning of the or the northern portion of the second phase will be pretty visible. This, obviously, the northern most building, which is proposed at a fifteen story building, is going to be pretty visible.
Now, Steve, how many feet? Fifteen stories is a hundred and fifty feet, right?
Yeah, that's roughly what this point would be up here.
What I understood pretty clearly was that the Merit seven buildings are a hundred and fifty feet from the bottom of the ground. Not from the top of the parking structure. So they're essentially the same height.
I don't know if they're quite the same height or, but I think they're not out of the ballpark.
That's what I understood from the previous meeting, you know, that they were both roughly speaking a hundred and fifty feet. You know, so that I think a lot of our concern about it is not as big a concern as we believe it is.
I I think when, for whatever reason, when this office development was approved. They, I don't know what, why they tried to almost, well, not sneaky, but almost, you know, disingenuous to the to start measuring the height from the deck area where the parking is, kind of where I have the cursor pointing.
Right.
Even though the the height itself is like, it it reveals at a much taller building than how the number of stories by definition reads.
Right, from the ground, from the actual ground. It's a hundred and fifty feet, and so will the fifteen story building be a hundred and fifty feet. That's what I understood pretty clearly Attorney was saying.
So so if you're, the question really is, you know, I think these buildings down here will not be overly visible, the the lower section. This middle section, there's going to be, which is why we had that one condition about flipping the massing of the building. That the condos that are back in this area would have been um, I I think would have had some loom effect from that development, which is why, and the applicant has agreed that they'll kind of flip the massing closer to Glover Avenue and then away from Oakwood. But on this end of the development, you, I think these buildings are going to be pretty visible, but even this kind of zoomed in aerial picture, it it's not like it's really, it's going to be visible if you're driving up the road. It'll be visible coming down Gris Mill or up Gris Mill or probably down at the intersection of Main Ave and Gris Mill, but there's not a house or a development that's right near that, that's going to have this in their backyard. These properties are, you know, you're almost, it's probably a thousand feet away from any kind of house from that that vantage.
Yeah, they may be visible, but it's not like they're out of scale with with Merit seven. And it's certainly they they aren't looming over any neighbor, as you point out.
Anybody want me to go through any of those again? I'm subbing for the architect here, so please be kind.
Are there any, any other questions about this? All right, then let's move on. Let's see, where do we stand in who's eligible to vote? Who's not eligible?
Everybody's vote, I don't think. I don't think we're, so we don't take, we don't need to take any action on that.
No, but we need to take action on the next two items.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Mr. Chairman, just thank you very much for the actions you've taken tonight, we very much appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing you shortly.
Thank you. Hector, were you authorized to vote on the last item that we voted on?
I wasn't on the last one.
And JJ? You voted, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Darius was not, did not vote on that last item. So JJ, for this next vote, I'll knock you off and Darius will be able to vote. And then for the last item, we'll knock Hector off and JJ will be able to vote. Okay? All right. These next two items, we discussed at our last meeting, and I believe the meeting before that, and that is opting out of the accessory, state accessory apartment with the intent to revise our existing regulations, and that is Public Act number 21-29. In order for us to opt out, we need to have a two-thirds vote. And this is a continuation of the meeting that we, the public hearing, that we started on this at our, at our last meeting. Steve, do we need to permit public comment on this one at this point?
Yeah, you would. So this is technically the public hearing, so anyone from the public can speak. I mean, if you want, if you want me to go through the memo or however you want to do it, Mr. Chairman.
Let me just first explain how we run our public hearings, should there be people in the audience who wish to speak. The staff will talk about our opt-out, they may speak about the initial draft that they've put together to replace the state regulation on Act number 21-29. Commission members can ask meetings as they wish throughout that presentation. When the presentation is completed, we'll invite the public to speak on this matter. Anyone who wishes to speak will have an opportunity. We need you to give us your name and your address. You can speak as long as is necessary to make all the points that you wish to regarding these items. We would ask that if you're simply repeating comments that someone else has made, you simply let us be aware of that without having you to have to go through your entire presentation and for us to have to listen to basically the same presentation over and over again. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, the staff will respond to any comments or questions that have been raised. Again, during that period, the commission members are able to ask any questions they wish. Once that is completed, we will close the public hearing and in all likelihood will proceed to a vote. Then we will hold the second public hearing. Again, the first being on the opt-out of accessory apartments with intent to revise existing regulations, and the second being opt-out of parking requirements under the same state regulation number 21-29.
I have a question, sorry.
Sure.
I'm gonna interrupt. Are we combining the two items into one public hearing? Wouldn't that make sense?
No, I think we're, we need to handle this as two separate public hearings. They're different. They're different matters.
Yeah, technically, because it should be two separate hearings and then two separate action items that way.
I just thought it was the same public act, you know, that required, it was the same law that requires the public hearing for both, I just thought it could be more efficient.
I could be, I could be wrong, Mike, but I don't think these are public hearings that are gonna go on for hours and hours.
You never know.
No, you're never, you're right, quite right.
Which is. As I said, with all due respect, everyone, so.
All right, so.
And I'm sorry. One more, sorry, sorry, one question. Is the, is the conversation tonight just about opting out, or is it the opt-out plus the new regulation?
No, it's simply the opt-out. We, we have to, should we choose to opt-out, again, requires a two-thirds vote, and then it needs to go to the common council for their public hearing as well. I think it's only after that that we can propose new language. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to, and we can do this at your next meeting or the following one, I think it would be a good idea to give council a sense of what you're recommending, because that's the first question they're gonna ask is, okay, great, you're opting out, but what do you want to do instead? So I think you don't have to vote on anything, but I think you can say, here's, here's our recommended replacement package, or here's our recommended action.
Well, let's say our draft recommended action.
Yeah, exactly.
That's, that's fine, that's fine. I think that politically that makes good sense. With that, let's open the first hearing. And that's Public Act number 21-29, opt-out of accessory apartment with intent to revise existing regulations. Steve, will that be you or Brian?
That'll be me, so I'll just pull up the staff memo that you guys had been sent. I'm gonna kind of try to take this in three parts, so the first part is Public Act 21-29 was passed by the Connecticut Legislature in fall of 2021, so one of the biggest changes to it was the new accessory apartment rules, or ADU rules. So they essentially had six big changes proposed in the legislation, so one was to designate zones where ADUs can be allowed, which we already do. Two is to allow accessory apartments to be detached from single-family homes, which we currently do not do. Three is to set a maximum net floor area of the accessory dwelling unit, 30% of the net floor area of the house or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less, our current requirement is lower than that. Four is to require setbacks, lot size, building frontage less than or equal to what's required for the principal dwelling. We sort of comply with that, sort of don't, but I'll go through that further later. Five is to provide for height landscaping and architectural design standards that do not, or not exceed what we have for a single-family dwellings. Again, we'll get into that a little bit later, and then six is more of some building code stuff, you know, requiring passageways between the accessory apartment and the house. And then really, some of the more interesting ones are the periodic renewals, and I can go into more detail on that as well. So the opt-out process is a two-part process, first it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission to hold the hearing for opting out, you have to do a two-thirds vote if you agree to opt-out, and then it goes to common council for them to hold their public hearing to finalize opting out. So as part of this, we didn't want it to sound like we're opting out because we hate the legislation, I think probably 99% of the legislation we agree with, we think detached accessory apartments are a good thing. Really, just kind of some of the things that we thought could use some tweaks were around the size and setbacks, which would ultimately require us to opt-out, so let me pull up kind of the things that we were discussing in our prior meetings with you guys. As far as reasons that would make us opt-out. So the first one was maximum size, so again, the state wanted 30% of the single-family houses or 1,000 square feet. We kind of sat and looked at 700 square feet as the maximum size, so if that's kind of where we're wanting to go, then we would have to ultimately opt-out. The second is setbacks. For a detached accessory apartment, what we were kind of thinking is that it should be most likely located behind the single-family house, you know, if you have a single-family house and you have, in your setback, a great distance from the road or your front property line, we probably don't want to see an accessory apartment going in front of your house. So that would ultimately require an opt-out. Three is maximum height, the state statute says that the accessory apartment can be the same height as a single-family home. We thought that was a little bit too high, so we proposed lowering that a little bit so that the accessory apartment remains accessory to the single-family house. Architectural design is an interesting one. I think the feel of the commission was you don't want to see, you know, storage containers or mobile homes being utilized as accessory apartments. So we wanted to kind of put some language in there that says the single, the accessory apartment has to resemble the house, and then kind of put some prohibited structures that can't be used for an accessory apartment. Right now, we do not have any design standards for your house, so if you, you know, because this is technically an exceedance of that, it would require you to opt-out if you, if you agree and want to go that way. And then the last periodic renewals, there's kind of some, there's two ways to look at periodic renewals, we kind of think it could be a good thing, because especially today with lots of corporations purchasing homes, they can easily outbid, you know, a regular person trying to buy a home, and the corporation can now buy it, build an accessory apartment, and then they're collecting two rent checks, and we're not increasing homeownership, which is kind of a goal of the whole legislation that was passed, so that requiring the homeownership and the periodic renewals to ensure that the homeowner lives on the property could be a good thing. The downside to that was, I was reading, I think it was the ARP research into ADUs, and they kind of looked at it and said, banks are kind of hesitant to hand out loans for you to do construction of ADUs if you have to live on the property, because God forbid something happened to you as a property owner and you no longer live on the property, now you technically have created a zoning violation, so there's kind of two ways to look at it. I don't know which is the lesser of two evils, so I think because we're not sure yet that, you know, it's a, it's a good reason to opt-out, and we'll look at that further. And then with that, I have the, the proposed or the draft language, very, you know, preliminary at this point. I don't know, Chairman, if you'd like to go through that now, or if you'd want to open it up to the public.
Let's open it up to the public, we'll, we'll look at this as, once we have heard from the public.
Okay, so if anyone from the public here would like to speak on opting out of the accessory apartment language, you could use the raise your hand feature, or you could hit star nine if you're dialed in.
Good evening, thank you, my name is Diane LaRocella. I thank you for the research being, that has been done by the staff and others related to the matter at hand. While Public Act 21-29 is not perfect, I ask tonight that this particular this particular vote, go back to the drawing board, as it's written with the intention that Brian has mentioned as far as the potentials and the discussions amongst staff about why the PA 21-29 is written is not, is not desired in Norwalk, I ask that we go back and I want to be assured, I'm asking currently that you do not opt-out of 21-29 for the following reasons. There is a crisis in affordable housing, but also for people, especially seniors, and I've lived in the Cranberry area and all over town, but especially in the Cranberry area, there are many seniors that would love to stay on their property. And these are seniors that are viable, they're not in their 90s, but there are, I know some that are. These are folks that, they're empty nesters, they're widows or widowers. They would like to stay on the property, but they really don't have a need for a large home, and they would love to rent it out and stay in a smaller home near, on the property, or both attached or detached. I ask that there be a serious consideration, should you approve to opt-out. 700 square feet is, I think, a ridiculously small amount for adults that have accumulated antiques or things. I really think that it was just that, I think there should be at least a happy medium, I don't think 1,000 feet. With, with all the other restrictions that you have, I don't believe you're gonna have an onslaught of ADUs. I have studied a lot of what the AARP has done, a lot of study, and I'm pleased to see that Brian and others have looked at that, in the past I have recommended that people study, and the commissioners study the AARP. They have at least five different booklets for free about all the different alternatives. 700 feet is far too small, it really is, and I read in the prologue, and I really do appreciate the intention that the staff and the commission has, the prologue to why the staff is recommending that you opt-out contained a lot of good wording, words that I agreed to. But there's a reason why there's been only, I think roughly 250 some odd ADUs in the city with the, with the current laws, it's because they were too restrictive, and that was attached. So I ask that, I'm very much in favor of allowing detached, and I'm glad to see that the staff and the commission, I hope, approves of allowing with certain, with several restrictions detached. I, so number one, 700 square feet, way too small. Number two, on the height restriction, I feel that, again, that is if you're, if you really are saying, meaning what you say in the prologue about realizing and understanding about seniors and the need for affordable housing, many of these standards or restrictions, I call them restrictions that you're offering, are gonna be a reason why you're hardly going to build any of these. So I ask that we go back to the drawing board, the height, as long as it's no greater than the height of the home, what's, what's the problem there? I mean, it's just, it's kind of like a. I mean, it's just, it's kind of like a. It it doesn't make sense as long as it is no greater. On the setbacks. I feel that it is. Not necessarily a good thing that why you couldn't have. A detached or attached accessory apartment in the front. It's site specific, right? I don't think we should dismiss as totally that you could not have. Because in many of these cases, you would never be able to build. A a detached or attached if it was in the front, if it wasn't allowed in the front. So I don't think that that restriction should be in there either. I think that certifying each year or having periodic renewals is another reason why you're not going to get people to build these things. I would say, and I don't mean this to sound in any way. Crass. You this commission and its hardworking staff have enough. Zoning violations along Golden Hill where Mr. Mueschak lives and many of you live. There are many zoning violations. With regular single family homes. Let's look at those first before we totally obliterate any chance. Of discouraging people from. This is the least egregious that I'm finding, but let's let's make sure that all these standards are not going to. Turn people off. I have just two more points. The issue related to the type of home, while I appreciate the staff. Saying they want to make sure that certain things aren't done. For any of you that are doing, and I do believe many of you have done some homework on this. The the merchants of tiny homes, many of those tiny homes are beautiful. And they are on wheels. There's a whole new, I'm a member of the Connecticut Green Building Council. The Homes Committee, I am not speaking on their behalf, but I've met a lot of architects and we've talked about this issue. It's a whole new world and the thinking of the staff in suggesting to you all that you don't allow. Anything on wheels. You don't allow manufactured housing. You don't allow container housing. They're much nicer. And they blend in a lot more than they did ten, even ten years ago. In fact, we know there are three D printer based homes that are gorgeous. So again, I think this is old thinking being applied here that's going to cause hardly any. Chance to really see this wonderful. Possible way to add to our affordable housing mix. I myself. Have been in need of affordable housing ever since I lived in Nor. Norwalk, some of that is my own choices, I guess, but it's it's there's a dearth of them and and I do feel. That PA dash twenty one twenty one dash twenty nine, and I did speak to that. At the Legislative Public Hearing, the Zoom Hearing. There's a reason for it. We are in a crisis for affordable housing. Truly affordable housing, not what we're getting with many of our luxury apartment buildings with the barely affordable. You know, sing. Single bedroom apartments that are over two thousand dollars. That's not really affordable for many people. So please open up your minds. Please do not opt out unless there are major changes in all of the multitude of standards. That the staff has put forth. I think it's being far too cautious. It's not modern thinking as far as what's really out there, especially tiny homes on wheels. And I feel that the setback issue should be rethought of again. Lastly, I just wanted to say that I've read the book The Color of Law, and I think that should be a standard training for all commissioners of land use boards. There was a group out of St. Paul's that had been before you when we were redoing zoning. There are some tinges of discriminatory zoning in in some of our areas. Related to the fact that they're so restrictive that that's why we don't have that many accessory apartments in Norwalk. I'm really pleased that you're making this effort. I do appreciate what the staff is trying to do. But I believe it's too restrictive still. Go back to the drawing board and let's have this discussion again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Diane Cece Olmstead Place in East Norwalk. I will be brief because I because I want to say I can say. Ditto to basically everything that Ms. LaRocella just said to the commission. So you can record that accordingly. I share the same concerns about. Opting out without really. Better defining and having some open discussions about what the restrictions would be. On the new version of this. And I think if if I've understood Mr. Baker and all the presentations he's done on this. Is that. There's not necessarily a time sensitive table right now that's forcing us to make the decision. Tonight on the opt out. And I also want to understand. That if we do opt out of the the state wording on this. And ultimately, another version gets put before the. The council and the commission. I'm assuming and and staff, I hope will answer this. I'm assuming that all of that would come back to a public hearing on its own. As as a standalone, you know, new zoning regulations. I want to make sure of that. But I do agree that I think it's probably not a good idea if we if if it's kind of a slippery slope here now to opt out tonight. And without really better understanding of just how restrictive. This new wording is, it will end up with, I think, or maybe it's a goal of of staff and the commission, I'm not sure. But we could end up in a position where we really still can't take advantage of providing affordable housing. Which is supposed to be a major goal in the state. And also, as as we continue to point out to you all the time. That this city really needs to step up and do more with aging in place. Housing initiatives and ADUs are fabulous way to achieve that for so many people. Whether it's somebody aging in place in the ADU itself or in the main house and having support. And financial aid from having a rental too. And I'm glad also that Ms. LaRocella brought up to you. The the new age thinking about tiny houses. I think a couple of meetings ago, it may have been Commissioner Wells or someone. Who stated that, you know, who on earth would want to live in those things. Honestly, many of them are very, you know, tasteful. They provide all of the necessities that you need to have a small living environment where you don't have to have a large footprint. And I think it's time that we take a look at some of those options as well for housing in the in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name is Ben Han Peter. I live at two six two East Avenue. And I'd like to just echo the comments of the first commenter. I think that was very well put. And I agree pretty much point for point. I don't have. A ton to add other than that. I just also like to iterate that we really do have an affordable housing crisis and I think ADUs are a great way. Of building out that missing middle housing that we don't have a lot of right now. I think as both of the last two commenters have have mentioned, they ADUs serve a lot of purposes that. Other developments can't. I think we need to have a a large diversity of the type of new housing that we're building out. And ADUs serve a really great and a lot of cases, unique purposes. I think we should really err on the side of giving a homeowner's flexibility to. Build it in. A few different ways and be. Less restrictive rather than more restrictive to try to incentivize more of these being built. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak, you could use the raise your hand feature or hit star nine. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Brian, any response to what you heard?
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of the the points that Ms. LaRocella brought up are kind of reasons. Why we need to opt out. There's a lot of considerations still to be taken into account. As far as what we do want to allow for for accessory apartments. I think. The commission has seemed to be open to detached accessory apartments, which I think is the biggest needle mover. I think that's why. Norwalk does not have many accessory apartments in the city. So I think that's the biggest step. Forward and then. You know, we do have a time restriction on us. If we don't opt out, city doesn't opt out by January first. Then we're opted in. And then you can, you can't go back and ever, you know, modify that regulation to make it more restrictive if you see any issues arise. So I think, you know, from that perspective. The the cautious approach is you could opt opt out and then essentially. Adopt the state's language as your own. And then, you know, should you want to change the language in a year or two, you can, you have the ability to do that. The other thing with housing affordability, we completely agree and we understand. We think accessory apartments, just like building more apartment buildings. You know, especially around our transit districts is an important piece to increasing affordable housing. So. This is, you know, one piece of the pie and we completely agree. But we think, you know, a lot of the standards that were in the draft regulations, which are going to. Very preliminary and subject to change and will have their own public hearing once they get proposed. Our standards that exist in our regs today. So there's, it's not like I was just pulling those out of thin air and, you know, hoping that it sounded good. If you want to build a detached garage, it has to be. In the rear half of your of your lot or seventy feet behind your front property line. So we kind of went with that standard. And just applied it to accessory apartments because if you're building a detached one. You know, it's very similar to if you have a garage and you want to go over it. Well, there you go. So. You know, that's kind of our reasoning behind what was proposed and then why we should opt out.
Questions from a commission members?
Hey, may I make one comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
And I think Brian summed summed it up very well. I I I think it's a little. Little ironic in some of the comments that we constantly hear about, you know, even with the last application, we were talking about height. I don't think people quite. Are going to appreciate or realize. If you are allowed to build a detached ADU to the same height, you could build the main house. At a much greater reduced setback than the main house right on somebody's property line when that building actually gets built. The ones receiving the phone calls about that are going to be. P and Z staff and ultimately the commission's going to hear about it because. Trust me, I've been in that scenario many, many times in twenty plus years. So. That size building closer to the property line will raise a lot of eyebrows. That's why. We've, you know, I I think city staff is in generally in favor and supportive of the public act language. I think what we've proposed is a little more realistic, real world scenario of how to apply that.
If I can make a comment as well.
Sure, go ahead, Richard.
I have spent a considerable amount, probably more time than I should on the internet because it's fascinating about the. ADUs. And there's tremendous amount of information on ADUs online. And the ones that that you see the most of range in price from two hundred to a million dollars to. Add to your property. There's another website that I get because I bought a backhoe and a tractor. Called Iron Planet. And you can buy a container completely ready to live in for five thousand dollars. So I think that we should. Opt out and have some say in what is put up. If that's the direction we're going in.
And may I say something?
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, the I think there was maybe some misunderstanding because the opt out and we we actually brought this up on the record. In previous meetings that we were afraid an opt out would look. Like we were did not agree with the intent of the act. And that is not true. We are opting out to maintain flexibility. To make this better, a better. Process. For the city, for stabilizing neighborhoods. For making sure that property owners are protected. At the same time, encouraging. More affordable housing to be built. You know, we also live in a very wealthy area of the state. Granted, we have great inequities, obviously, from one block to the next. I think. South Norwalk and Rowayton are, or you can say Le- Wilson Point are a good example of that. And the wealthier areas, we are, you know, we have to be careful that we do not just encourage the building of more expensive. Super expensive luxury housing. In areas like Roway. And so we want to make sure, obviously, it's been a major. Point of contention among the in the members of the community. That many of us as commissioners share because we are part of communities as well. We can't deny that and we can't act that indifferent, but we do see people getting alarmed when they're building such huge houses, let's say in Rowayton. Right next to each other. It's, you know, it's it's a common thing to hear. That people are afraid of that. So we are, we we have to balance. The the sort of preservation of of. Some neighborhood character, and I realize that phrase has been. Used as a weapon or at least as a way of saying that's just. Code word for keeping things the way they are, the status quo, but there is something to be said for that. And so opting out. Doesn't mean that we're not, we didn't have the intent of the act. That's all I'm trying to say basically in a nutshell, but we want to make it. We want to make sure everyone is protected at the same time. So the opt out is really just to give us flexibility, but our goal is the same as the. Desegregate Connecticut folks who have spearheaded all of this. And the intent of the public act, which was passed. Our our intent is the same. I want to make that very clear. But opting out is the most feasible plan for us. Excuse me, to do that without locking ourselves into something that may not work in the future.
Anyone else wish to comment on this?
Lou, if I may.
Sure, Tammy.
Thank you. I'm I was surprised to hear the number of two hundred and fifty applications that this. P and Z has already had. Mentioned by Ms. LaRocella. Is that accurate, Steve? Kleppen?
Brian, do you remember the number? I know.
Yeah, it's two fifty nine and that's.
Thank you.
All of the applications that we've received since. The reg was passed in nineteen eighty four, so forty years of a reg and we've only gotten two hundred and fifty nine accessory apartments.
Oh, okay. So it goes back that far. Maybe it wasn't, you know, promoted properly anyway. Because if that happened recently, I would say, wow, that's a lot of applications if, you know, just since the beginning of this topic being brought up, but okay, so it's been taken over time. And then also with. Due respect to Ms. LaRocella, you know, we did look at. Some single family houses in Norwalk that are six hundred to nine hundred to a thousand square feet. And that's a very good sized house. So I do think that we want to be careful. Because then we're just going to be double building lots and we don't know what zone these are going to be allowed. And the teeny, the teeny houses or houses on wheels are no more than six hundred square feet. Richard, I don't know if your container. House gave you a square footage. But I think. Seven hundred square feet is actually very livable. And I'm. I mean, these are supposed to be accessory dwellings. They're not supposed to be two. Major size houses on one lot. Otherwise, you must might as well divide the lot if you're in the right zone. And I think we want to be very careful, you know, putting these in already densely populated zones. You might want to put these structures. In less densely populated zones so that you don't over densify. But anyway, I I think we should opt out and work what we want for the city. For the city's sake, not for the state's sake. I'm not opposed to it. I think it's a good idea, but I think. We, you know, we live here and we know what's better for our town than the people at the state level. Thank you.
Any other comments? Right. If not, I'm going to close the hearing. And we'll move on to action. Okay, hearing is closed. And. And, um, is there, uh, a, uh, motion? Uh, Ri- Richard Rowena is making a motion to opt out. Is there a second? And, um, uh, JJ is, uh, making a motion to second. Uh, Brian, uh, can you put up the, um, motion, please? Any comments on, uh, the motion? Language of the motion? Uh, hearing done. Um, let's move, uh, to a vote. Um, again, I think this calls for a roll call. Um, Steve?
I apologize. I, who was not seated on the alternative?
Uh, this time around? Good question. I thought I, I made the decision on the next two. Um, uh, yikes.
I believe I was going to be on these one.
Yes, you said Hector would be on this one.
Okay, so, uh, is it Hector and, uh, JJ and then, um, JJ and Darius for the second?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So JJ's in. Gotcha. Okay. With that said, Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Patches?
Yes.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Mr. Baxendale?
Yes.
And Mr. Shulman?
Yes. Uh, so it, uh, meet, it's unanimous. It meets the, uh, two thirds, uh, majority. Uh, and, uh, therefore passes and, uh, will now pass it on to the common council. Uh, I see that it's eight 18. Uh, what if we take a, um, let's say a 12 minute break. We'll reconvene at, uh, eight, eight 30. Um, we have a couple of, uh, more items, uh, to run through. All right. See everyone at eight 30 sharp. Let's begin, uh, our second public hearing. Uh, 2022 dash 23 Planning and Zoning Commission Public Act number 21 dash 29, opt out of parking requirements. Brian, um, you're going to do this again?
Yeah. So I'll share my screen again. So this, uh, same act as the accessory apartment, one 21, 20 dash, 21 dash 29. Um, they created new, uh, maximum parking standards. Um, so essentially what they came up with was for developments. Um, you, the municipality can't require more than two parking spaces for two or more bedrooms, uh, two or more bedroom unit, and then more than one parking space for a one bedroom or studio unit. Um, so we kind of looked at that reg and then saw or compared it to our existing regulation for parking, which is 1.3 parking spaces per unit regardless of bedroom size. And what we kind of got was a mixed bag of which uh, which regulation would require less parking because I think that's the goal is to require less parking because, um, if you require too much, it, you know, adds to the cost of rent and asphalt and all the, all those kinds of things. So, um, what we saw is typically for developments, um, if they had a higher percentage of two bedroom or more units than one bedroom, uh, you started to see that our regulation typically was the one that would provide less parking. And then for developments that, uh, required or had more than more one bedroom and studio units that the state statute uh, was the more beneficial one. Um, the one thing that was really our primary concern is we have our inclusionary zoning fee, which allows you to reduce your parking down to one space per unit across your entire development. If you pay a 1% fee that goes into our affordable housing trust fund. So given the status of our current zoning reg rewrite and kind of unsure how the state statute would affect our inclusionary zoning fee and parking reduction that way. We felt it was best to opt out, keep our existing standard. And then with the zoning reg rewrite, um, we're going to target, you know, further parking reductions in specific, uh, locations. Um, so that's kind of the, the background on that.
Brian, just to clarify one thing, effectively this, it's unclear whether the workforce housing reduction can be applied with the state's laws. Is that?
Yeah. So I think what would happen is, um, you know, we don't know if, uh, if this, they use the state law and they can get down to the parking number that would be required if they use the inclusionary zoning fee, then now they get that lower parking number and they're not contributing to our affordable housing trust fund. Um, which we think could be problematic because now they're kind of getting that incentive without, you know, providing the city with, you know, that, that fund.
So essentially, excuse me, um, opting out is, uh, for us preserving, uh, more affordable housing at this point in time. Because it allows us to maintain our existing affordable housing, uh, fund.
Right. It would keep the existing reg in place. And then as part of the zoning reg rewrite, when we're starting to look at, um, you know, well, our parking standard should be especially near, you know, the Sono Station, um, and other mass transit areas, kind of what a new parking standard could be or should be for that, um, you know, for ever reducing further there.
And so to paraphrase, like the last opt out, we are not opting out because we disagree with the intent of the public act. We are opting out to maintain flexibility for a solution that is, uh, more appropriate for Norwalk while still of achieving the goals of the public act.
Right. And we kind of, you know, it's with our inclusionary zoning fee, we kind of meet the standard of the state. You know, we go down to the one space, no matter what across the board. So we kind of hit that, but it's getting that fee that is kind of the important part for that. Um, and then, you know, really where we're only out of compliance is that additional point three that we require for the, for the, uh, potentially the one bedroom units.
Right. JJ? JJ, you're muted.
Brian, question. Um, so the, the one parking space, um, requirement, does that or does that also take into effect guest parking or, um, um, wheelchair, um, um, tho- those who have disability? Disabilities?
So, so we count, if you, um, th- the building code is what mandates how many ADA spaces that you have to require. And those count towards your parking total. So if you have to require, if you're required to have 10 parking spaces and two of them have to be ADA, then you make your two ADA and then you have your eight additional spaces for the total of 10.
Right. But what about the guests? What about guest parking? I mean, is that, is that factored into this number or no?
No, we don't factor that into, to any of our calculations.
Uh, other comments from commission members at this point?
Uh, just a question. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering how the, the 1.3 or the one, um, affects the units that are being built on some of the side streets. I, I raised this question before. Again, I can't remember the name of the street, but it was a red, it was in the hospital area. And the people were building a, another six units in between the two buildings that they owned. And they took advantage of new parking requirements. I- i- is there any, anything that we're doing about increasing the parking requirements for those kind of areas?
Not that I know of, not, not as far as increasing. Um, typically we're looking at trying to decrease, but, um, yeah, that I, I, I don't, I'm not aware of anything as far as trying to increase in those areas.
Yeah, I might add one quick point. While we're not looking to, to Brian's, we're not looking to increase, there are um, talks underway about residential parking permit programs. So that if you're, you know, you're allowed to park in certain areas where you live. Um, that was one, one of the recommendations in the East Norwalk TOD plan. So that way, you know, the, the developers and the tenants have to park on their site. They have to accommodate those, those individuals and they're not allowed to spill over onto the residential street. So that's, that's a program TNP is looking at citywide in different areas. So we're having
That's the
ongoing conversations.
The parking pass?
Right.
Okay.
Steve, is this, I mean, I feel like the pendulum is swinging the other way. Um, you know, for the last couple of years on the planning commission, it was all about having enough parking. Now, you know, it's swinging the other way and it's all about not having too much parking. If we wait on this or, or hopefully will we achieve what you think is a good balance?
Um, so my mindset, we've probably always had, I mean, since we, but I've been working with the city, we've already, we've reduced parking requirements down quite a bit from where they were. Um, the, the 1.3 number is actually a real number. It's not, uh, kind of just an arbitrary number. The, and it comes from two different sources. The 1.3 is based on actual occupancy counts at, at, um, developments throughout the city, some of the larger ones where they've actually calculated that they have a building with 200 units in it and they, you know, based on counts it during the day, during the night, that it averages out that they needed that 1.3 and that worked well. Also, we've heard from developers that, um, the banks like that, you know, and it might be a different number in Stanford than it is in Norwalk, for example, or even in, um, you know, Fairfield. But the 1.3 number was a number that they felt was appropriate in terms of financing as well, in terms of what the, the banks thought was a of, of, to make their project viable, they would need those number of spaces to achieve it.
My point was that there's, there's, doesn't seem to be any or differentiation between, you know, the high rise buildings that we have and the TODs that we have and the two story buildings that are on a 20 foot wide street.
Right. So that the standard is for multifamily, it's 1.3 per unit. Um, obviously that, you know, the, it's economy of scale as well. It's easier to figure out parking when you have 100 units versus 20 units. I, I, I get the point there. I think to, to Brian's point, uh, in several areas, we're actually thinking that, you know, that, that parking should be, uh, reduced further, just, and it makes sense based on the location, but a- anything is up for consideration in terms of, you know, if, if things were, if we're seeing things on the ground that are causing problems, then we, that'd be something we'd want to address. I haven't heard of any problems with anything on the, any of the new developments. No one's complained about overflow parking on a side streets that I've seen. I mean, I know that probably occurs in certain areas now, but I haven't seen that in relation to a project that we've
It, but Steve, this is strictly for residential, right?
Yeah, it's, it's based off dwelling unit.
Yeah.
What happens when you get the mixed use building with the retail and the residential? Then the, the retail people have a different number, but if you're building it to the residential standard, will there be enough parking for the retail?
Yeah. So that it, it's actually the same number, but they have to provide us with, uh, it's, it's the, they have to look at the commercial plus the residential and do the aggregate or do the 1.3. They have to look at it both ways. But the kind of idea with, with mixed use is that there's a shared parking there. So a lot of times the uses aren't always occurring at the same time, or there's public parking available, like restaurants during the evening and they can park in other places where that's kind of the, the principle behind.
Okay.
And yet, and yet Tammy Wegmans um, is, um, significantly over parking in terms of our regulations uh, at over 500 spaces, but they, they absolutely insist that they need that. And they have a lot of experience with a lot of stores.
Yeah. You see the, the merit behind, you know, the parking maximum is even if you got rid of your, your parking requirements, a developer is still likely to provide some sort of parking kind of based on what they think is appropriate for the site. So that's backing behind it.
And I'll add, uh, too, that I've always felt that the market will actually determine where people will choose to live. Not everyone has that freedom. Uh, I understand that, but, um, for most people, let's say who are in the rental market, they would self-select because I, this came up at 2:30 East Avenue and, uh, next to the train station. Where everybody said, oh, everybody's going to have two cars per unit. They're going to live like a suburban lifestyle. And I said, well, why would you live next to the main train line with all that noise and all of those issues unless you wanted the convenience of walking across the parking lot to the train? Because you would rather be, you'd be happier if you didn't care about the train, you'd be happier over an Avalon, Norton or some other place that was only car accessible. So I, I, I do believe that you, you know, people self-select and, and by having more limited parking, people may choose not to live there if they're going to have, if they're car dependent. Uh, or, you know, choose to have two cars or three cars, which we have every right. Everybody has a right to own as many cars as they'd like, but, uh, it's not a bad thing. But you will choose to live where the parking is. And if you don't need the car, you'll choose to live in an area in a, you know, in a building that may not have the extra visitor parking or that convenience. So, so I believe the market does, uh, you know.
Presuming there's a housing inventory for the person to feel as though they have the ability to, um, scout out different sites potentially.
Uh, point well taken. And I, and I do acknowledge that a lot of people don't have that, you know, th- there are a lot of desperate people right now. We are in a housing crisis. Uh, it's important to, to, uh, yes, to, to acknowledge that for sure. Uh, and, you know, we're, just don't have enough supply as indicated by the buildings filling up as quickly as they are built. Uh, there's no, there's no, there's some public commentary out there that these buildings are third empty, like, well, you know, I remember people believing a rumor that Waypoint was half empty, half, half empty. And it, and that was not supported by any reality or any facts. It was just a rumor that was spread by people who were against apartments. Uh, but every building that we see being built in Norwalk is being filled up, indicating the, the amount of, uh, demand and, and pressure. So anyway, we're getting sidetracked here, but uh, it's, it, the parking is part of housing, increased parking increases cost of housing. I think that's what the public act is trying to address. We're opting out, not to say we disagree with that, but to give us the, again, like the first one, more flexibility in handling, handling the details.
Uh, any further comments before we open it up to the public? All right. If not, uh, let me explain again. Um, we're going to open it up, uh, to the public. You have, uh, as much time as you need uh, to, uh, make your, uh, points. We don't set a a time limit, though we do appreciate brevity. Um, please, uh, introduce yourself with your name uh, and, uh, your, uh, address. And, um, Brian will, uh, explain, uh, how you can request, request to speak.
Sure. So same time, same thing as last time, uh, you used to raise your hand to at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're dialing on a phone, you'd hit star nine.
Is that to speak? Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Jim Anderson, Two Old Well Court in East Norwalk. Uh, I agree with, uh, Mike, what he had said about the, uh, selecting where you live. I live very close to where the East Norwalk train station is and I, I go through that, uh, the new housing and I actually see the parking lot filled with quite a lot of cars inside and outside. So, um, yeah, whether they're guests or whatever, I'm not sure, but, uh, I agree with what Mike is saying. Um, decreasing it now at this point, and I see it as a, uh, my company is a property management, so I see it from a different angle of, uh, existing condominiums that were built many years ago with using, I think it was 1.5. Uh, there's a shortage of the complexes I manage now presently. Uh, whether it's the, um, the children moving back after they graduate from school or, uh, staying home or whatever it is, but the increase staying home or whatever it is, but the increase uh, even for one bedroom, two bedroom, or even three bedrooms, uh, the number of cars is, it just, we run out of space of, uh, of the one point five at least. So, uh, I, I think one of the commissioners had mentioned something, the pendulum is kind of swinging the other way. Uh, people are staying home, but they're not opting out, not driving. I mean, I, I could see that on the roads. So, um, I don't know what my point is, but I think, like I said, I'll just mimic what Mike had said. Uh, depending on where the, uh, the property is located and you would think that if you're going to be living next to a train station, you're going to be taking the trains, but I'm seeing that's not really the case, not at least the one that was built here in East Norwalk. And, uh, just one last question, I guess, we didn't, the commission hasn't spoken about the Mill Pond, right? So I'm not talking about that now. Is that correct?
That's right. That's the next item on the
Okay, then I'll be raising my hand for that for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then just to let you know, Jim, there's, so there's no public comment on, uh, Mill Pond for tonight. It's just a preliminary look and then we'll get to a public hearing probably sometime in July.
Diane Lauricella.
Thank you again, uh, for the record, Diane Lauricella, um, zero four Main Avenue, Unit 357, um. I, uh, took a look at this and I must confess the, all the calculations related to what is and what is not the best way to manage the issue of parking spaces. Um, I took a look at it. I have less problems with the city, the Planning and Zoning Commission opting out of this particular, um, section of 21 dash 29, Public Act 21 dash 29. Um, for some of the reasons I've heard the commissioners, the question and answer. Um, I think it's, uh, I've, I've been happy that our staff and this commission has, um, understood that the older ways of assigning uh, large amounts of parking in a modern age where people are, uh, not, are, are not necessarily needing uh, lots of parking spaces. Um, for instance, with the T O D regulations and the workforce housing regulations. So I am glad that we have some, this flexibility. Um, I just wanted to ask that this commission consider the following, that a special effort or project happened sooner rather than later to take a look at all of the zoning violations related in many of our areas of the city related to multifamily and single-family homes that have that have illegally too many folks living at the homes, which is not a, it's a health crisis um, as well, a fire crisis perhaps, and that there are many cars, many more cars on our streets at night after people get home from work than there ever have been. So it's connected to this that there be another special effort later on, or sooner rather than later, to take a look about that issue, about truly doing parking enforcement related to the, the homes, multifamily or single-family homes that, um, are attached to all of those cars. I, I like, uh, when I hear some, I think, uh, Steve Kleppen had mentioned that there, uh, or someone had mentioned that there is a review of taking a look at residential permit parking programs. I think that probably has more to do with the newer construction, but I think it would be great to look at eventually looking at our single and multifamily homes that are currently in existence. If there's any way to try to look at that problem. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Um, Diane Cece Olmstead Place in East Norwalk again. I just want to, um, echo what you heard from the other speakers and um, I think I understood that this is going, the next step is going to take the same course as the opt-out on the A D U's. Um, so there'll be an opportunity for people to really vet what's being recommended and also, um, a public hearing just on the new recommendation. So I'm happy to hear that. Um, I'm also concerned with it, um, relevant to the next item on your agenda as well. And of course, to all the new development applications that are going to be coming in. And I just will say, um, I know we can't speak to it, but, um, if anyone heard a strange sound a few minutes ago, it's probably an audible gasp um, out of East Norwalk when, uh, Mr. Baker suggested, um, the public hearing, um, for Mill Pond could be as soon as July. So I'm not sure if he misspoke, but hopefully you'll address that coming up and I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if anyone else would like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool or hit star nine if you're dialed in on a phone. Looks like that's it.
All right, uh, let's, uh, we're going to close, uh, the public hearing. And, uh, we'll go to, uh, action on, um, 2022 dash 23. Brian, um, do you want to comment on the remarks that were made by the public?
Um, no, I don't have anything further. I think, you, you know, we're with the right rewrite, you know, we're in a position where we're currently evaluating parking and you know, keeping our parking as is for now seems to be sort of keeping in line with the state recommendation and then also kind of doing what's best for Norwalk.
Okay. Uh, can I have a, uh, motion, uh, to opt out? Uh, Richard Rowena's made the motion. Darius Williams has seconded. Brian, can we, um, see the, um, motion, please?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Any comments on the language? If not, uh, we'll proceed to, uh, vote. Let's make this, um, a roll call vote.
Hey, I think, Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena? I'm assuming that was yes, um, Ms. Wells?
You're muted.
That's a yes for me.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Mr. Baxendale?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes. Uh, once again, uh, required a, uh, two-thirds majority and, uh, it was unanimous. So, uh, the opt-out, uh, is approved. With that, we'll move on, um, review of new applications, 2022 dash 24 S P, Mill Pond Holdings LLC, One Cemetery Street, construction of 77-unit mixed-use development. This is a preliminary review. Uh, I don't know, Mr. Edvardson or Mr. Growth Year?
Yes, thank, thank you, Jim. And, um, Steve, do you want to say anything or should we get right into it?
Um, no, go on. You guys go ahead and then I'll jump in as the commissioner has questions and fill in any gaps.
Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Matthew Edvardson. I'm a partner with Spinaker Real Estate and I'm here tonight representing Mill Pond Holdings. We'll see. Uh, Mill Ponds is a partnership between Principals of Spinaker and M F Scala and Company. I believe both Michael Scala and potentially Clay at this point have joined the meeting. It may be listed under, under my name. Unfortunately, I shared my link. Um, despite both firms being active regionally and nationally, they are both headquartered in Norwalk. The Scala and Wall Street Spinaker and Sono have strong ties to the community and a long positive track record of development and continued ownership thereof in the city. Together, we are presenting conceptual plans for initial review in association with a special permit application for the proposed redevelopment of One Cemetery Street in East Norwalk. This, as you all likely are aware, is what is now the former Wells Fargo Bank branch, the location being shuttered recently. This include, this parcel includes frontage on East Avenue, Cemetery Street and Gregory Boulevard and is largely encumbered by impervious asphalt. Site also extends to the northern portion of Mill Pond. These plans and this application will also be referred to conservation for review and approval. With the recent change in occupancy at the site, the long underutilization of the parcel and in light of the recently implemented East Newark Village T O D Zone, together with extensive planning that led to that actual regulation, um, which encourages and allows for more productive use of the site. We are excited to start discussion this evening regarding the appropriate redevelopment of the parcel. The parcel benefits, um, from its location and diverse robust community, inclusive of an abundance of public amenities and intense infrastructure. A primary directive to the design team is that the reuse of this site be additive to all the existing attributes of the neighborhood. We think these plans accomplish that goal, including pedestrian improvements, environmental benefits, expansion of the public realm and an opportunity to provide a new public access point to Mill Pond that also further diversifies the housing stock with unit size proposed that are skewed larger than a typical, uh, application. This together with accessibility, amenities and maintenance freedom available with the pro, proposed buildings, we envision existing East Newark residents, including empty nesters, being afforded an opportunity to remain in and continue to enjoy the neighborhood while simplifying their living arrangements. That said, we recognize that these plans are conceptual and we not only recognize but hope that this plan will evolve as we proceed through this land use approval process, um, and neighborhood outreach process. We welcome feedback from this commission, P and Z staff, the city's, uh, peer review consultants, various other departments of the city, as well as any other stakeholders, stakeholders, including neighbors. Our experience that is that this openness and fluidity is not only necessary, but most importantly results in a better plan for not only the community, but also the future occupants and patrons of the building, as well as ourselves as owner slash developer. Our, our larger team infused with that desire for a collaborative effort includes, um, Adam Blank, our counsel, Wolfie Rosen Questin, who's not available to join us today. Um, Bruce Beinfield, Stephen Pather and Colin Brothard, um, of Beinfield Architecture, Craig Flaherty and Vince Hines of Redness and Mead, Bruce Eckerson and, and Mike Murphy of Eckerson Design, our landscape architects. Um, and Hardison Hanover, um, led by Mike Galanti, our traffic engineers. With this being a preliminary review and to be followed by additional meetings, Colin will provide an overview of the post-site plan, uses and architecture. Uh, technical expertise from our civil engineer, landscape architect and traffic consultant will be available at future meetings. Um, and with that, if there's not any questions now, I'll turn it over to Colin and, and we'll all be available, um, uh, for questions or any early feedback and further discussion, um, once he's through.
Thank you, Matt. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Um, so as Matt said, we're, we're, um, excited to bring this preliminary plan forward. Um, I should qualify that it's not a maximum build out. Uh, you do permit more density with the new regulations. It's, uh, being built, uh, for the regulations, three and a half maximum stories. 77 units is the current unit count. There's an additional two and a half story building being cited on the eastern portion of the site. Uh, one of the major difficulties being that there's an existing city or state drainage event that um, covers a water course and sort of bisects the, the eastern portion of the site. So you more or less have two discrete, uh, sites that we're dealing with uh, to not encumber that isment. We've got about 5,500 feet of commercial space and approximately uh, 98 parking spaces that, uh, most of which are going to be concealed from view, uh, within the exit, the proposed building. As, uh, this is the site as it sits today. You can see it's, uh, largely impervious with, uh, a very small building on it. Uh, relatively underutilized. And if we look at this, this is a 1965 aerial that shows that this has been impervious since the 1960s. Uh, so we're dealing with, um, you know, approximately 60 years of, uh, impervious surface adjacent to, to Mill Pond. Uh, so we believe the new, the new plan uh, here, uh, greatly improves upon that by pulling the impervious surfaces back from the uh, edge, uh, providing, uh, amenities as, uh, as prescribed in the East Norwalk Village uh, transit, uh, district that was just created. Uh, so we've got rain gardens to help deal with water quality and, um, infiltration. Uh, we've also got, uh, pollinator, um, plantings in that zone to encourage uh, the pollinators to migrate and, um, um, pollinate the, uh, the flora and, uh, in the area. Um, the rain gardens and as per the regulations, uh, at least one of them is going to be a, a rain garden of interest, or, um, I think they call it, uh, I forgot what the term is off the top of my head, uh, but, um, an active rain garden where there's some sort of, uh, uh, art um, installation with that. So, uh, there's going to be some, some movement to it, uh, when it's raining or shortly after it rains, you'll be able to view that. We're providing a public plaza uh, in this area. So this is, functions as a pocket park off of East Avenue, uh, that would be available to the public. Uh, and then one of the things that's contemplated is providing continued public access down to, uh, this, um, landlocked city-owned parcel, uh, and this is a, uh, just a quick stab at a concept of what could go there, uh, that would be obviously subject to city approval since it is the city's land and, um, city, uh, developing that concept. The circulation could continue around the building and there's some discussion about some, uh, public parking access spaces, uh, on the site as well. The sidewalk would be greatly improved in the area going from about six feet currently to, uh, eight foot plus in some areas with, um, some curb extensions. And we'll be working with, uh, the city and, uh, transportation, mobile and parking as well as, uh, conduct uh, to get those, uh, these on-street parking stalls are, you know, hopefully in place that would provide an additional 14 spaces to uh, neighborhood residents, business owners, people patronizing the area. Uh, so we see that as a significant, uh, benefit to the neighborhood. Um, we're also, uh, showing the, uh, separated bicycle lane and interior sidewalk that are encircling the cemetery, which don't exist today. That's, uh, initiatives that the city has indicated that they're interested in providing in this area. So working with them to accommodate those future plans. Um, this project does reduce total coverage on the site uh, in a reduction of impervious surface, as I, I mentioned before. So this is going to be a uh, increase in the water quality controls and provide better stormwater management than what currently exists on the site today. Uh, some of the other things that, uh, are there in the, um, the points category that in the new regulations is rooftop solar. We're proposing a 50% air, uh, of the flat roof area, be solar panels. Talking to the design a little bit. The, uh, we took our design cues from many of the structures here in Norwalk, uh, building on the history of East Avenue and East Norwalk in particular. We felt like this varied vocabulary, um, provided a, a, a relief and a, a good composition at the southern end of the, what, what is essentially the town green. So if you look at most greens, they're, they're boxed in on all four sides. This one's missing a tooth. Uh, and filling it in is going to really help to provide a more continuous district and, uh, let you circumnavigate the green, especially with the improvements that the city and the state are contemplating, uh, around 136 in the cemetery that we've been made prove it to. So that's an exciting thing for us to kind of fill in that gap, provide a more expansive and engaging pedestrian realm uh, and some public amenity on the streetscape that will more easily get people, uh, around this section of road and through this neighborhood, uh, you'll be able to get to places more easily. So that's a very exciting part of this proposal. Moving on to the elevations, um, as you see back from the previous image, we've got kind of a brick mass here. Uh, that's emulate a, a smaller, uh, brick, um, manufacturing building or civic structure. We've got, um, some flat, uh, parapitted buildings similar to what you'd find from like a downtown, uh, hardware store, uh, a, a small, um, lodging house, uh, from the turn of the century that would be fronting on the town green. We've got, uh, our take on the manor house, which is, is drawn from inspiration in those East Norwalk images and then somewhat of an Italianate house here. Um, this one would house the, uh, leasing and house here. This one would house the leasing and the resident amenity. This one over here would, would have the retail space. We have created a passage at the request of zoning to get to the courtyard. So you can transit from Cemetery Street through to the the public courtyard and behind the retail space, there may also be access there. So that's still an evolving concept, but we've provided the passage with the step up from Cemetery Street and then you can circulate back out to East Avenue. So that's an exciting part of that plan. We've worked to develop these front stoops and provide some activity there and in some will have at least a few residential entries that front on Cemetery Street. Building B, as we call it, the smaller building is going to be two and a half stories is kind of a little bit Georgian in style. So again, trying to fit into the neighborhood and this building being on the easternmost portion of the site where cemetery transitions to Gregory. It's stepping down the scale and the massing of the building to address and transition to the residential neighborhood. But like that was appropriate since the parcel that we're left with after the drainage adjustment isn't significant enough to be able to do a lot with. This would also have some office space on the first floor. So hopefully it will be an active building throughout the day. And that's the end of the overview. Happy to go back and pull up any of the slides. I think the, the site plan is probably the best one. If you have any questions to for us to speak on. Thank you.
Yeah. And just, just add, I don't think we gave you the overall program. It's proposed as seventy seven apartment units and about just over five thousand square feet of commercial space with kind of the retail space, you know, the corner of East Avenue and Cemetery and more of a service and or office space. Kind of as, as the site bends around towards Gregory on the ground floor of that building. And Colin didn't touch on it, but you can, you could have, if Colin, if you go back to that elevation, you kind of pick up as you're driven around this area, there's a, there's a big topography change from East Avenue as you go towards Gregory Boulevard and you can kind of see that with that kind of angled line there, Colin, you can highlight that. And we tried to, you know, step the building slab to allow this, this building to kind of meet the street appropriately and not be kind of just pulled off the ground and and not activate the street. And what's not evident here is that kind of behind this and below grade, as you get close to East Avenue is a, as a lower level basement parking. And it's kind of completely hidden from the viewpoint, if you're on the public right away.
Is the Mill Pond polluted?
I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I would defer to staff.
Yeah, I, I can try to do some digging on that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, I've spoken to a number of people about the buildings. And there's a certain amount of excitement that they've generated. I feel a little bit different. Although it's the other side of the railroad tracks. This really is an entry building into East Norwalk. And I, 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 I think it, it deserves to be as special as your economics will permit. And at least in, in my view, looking at your preliminary drawings. And again, just my opinion. I'm, I'm, I'm not quite sure that it measures up. But again, just, just my opinion. I mean, I'd, I'd like to see people enter into East Norwalk, look at the building and say, wow.
Well, I, I think it, it's got a significant amount more detail on it than most of what is typically proposed on these types of buildings, the front porches, the dental moldings, moldings in general, column caps. You know, there's a lot of, if it was Victorian, I'd call it gingerbread, but there's a lot of stuff being applied to try and make it fit in and emulate the vocabulary of these, these coastal New England towns and villages that we see. So there, there is effort being spent there and we'll be working to further refine that and define it as the application progresses. So it's, you know, as you, as you may know, you get into these, these ideas and you formulate your, your, your thoughts about what these, these buildings and these, these, the character of these volumes wants to be and things develop and they progress and it's, it's a lot to get all the paint on the canvas all at once. So we usually take it in layers and I think there's at least another layer or two that you're going to see in the course of this application.
Now, I look forward to seeing a more mature version of what you presented tonight.
This is Brian Beckson. I think that's very important as well. Many people are feeling this is a relatively massive development which overshadows a lot of the symmetry and the feeling of East Norwalk. Even though I know you've taken a lot of pains to, as you say, to detail it a lot more than some people understand. I think there needs to be also more public access if possible as well, although I imagine you're anticipating many of the local population accessing it by footpath. Again, the feeling that the scale is just over the top a little is very much felt at the moment in the East Norwalk area by those I've talked to or heard from.
All right. Well, I can speak to that just quickly, but I, I think no matter whose proposition you'd be looking at on this site with the existing zoning that recently got approved, the, the height limitation is three and a half stories. And, you know, there's no hiding that somebody's going to want to develop a three and a half story building where they're allowed to. And, you know, you combo that with, as, as I mentioned, this is a, a prominent site at fronting on the entire south end of what is a historic town green. You're going to get a building that reads as important. And, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. It helps to define the space and provide a better overall public realm. You know, I, I wouldn't think it's going to be appear larger than the Lubbock School that's on the, on the, the east side of the the building, which is another, you know, large mass on the, on the building or sorry, on the green there. And so I, I, I think it's a, it's a it's a good fit for, for the site, I think. I, I don't think I don't think you'd get anything different from, from other proposals, really. You know, it's like somebody is going to look at this site and they're going to want to build it as best they can. And, and it makes sense if you study the the fine grained development in the area and the other communities up and down the shoreline that have these greens that you would get structures of this nature and, and broken up. So the, just to speak to kind of some of the East Norwalk vocabulary that we referenced, these are the forms that that we drew from, which are all in the neighborhood up and down East Avenue. And then I, we, we struggle to find the right transition between members and one of the places we looked to was Guilford, Connecticut, if any of you have been there and some of these other places where there, these structures do exist and you can reference the, what has grown organically over time. And a lot of these places have larger buildings and manor houses that may have fronted on that these greens initially, and then they grow closer together as the years progress. So what may have started as several discrete buildings just kind of get closer and closer together. And that's where we tried to emulate with these recesses and this articulation of the facade and also the varied roof lines is something that, that really grew over time. And we're hoping it's going to, it's going to read like that in the end. So there's a little bit more differentiation in the, in the the horizontal street line than reads in this elevation right now. And we look forward to coming back with renderings that better convey that.
Matt, is this picture we're looking at, is this wrapping around the whole front of, of the property? I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what I'm looking at here.
Yeah. So this is the Cemetery Street elevation where the grade changes is the greatest. It, the building up on it that so my highlighter up here. Lost my mouse.
I'm sorry. I had some difficulty hearing that last part.
No, sorry. I said I lost my mouse. So, so this building that fronts on East Avenue up here, as well as the corner of Cemetery Street is going to read obviously less, less intensely than the one further down the slope because of the grade change. And there's really no getting around that. So that is turns the corner and does proceed down East Avenue with that vocabulary. But then it opens up to the public plaza and then it transitions to the real estate office that's on the other side of the the property going down East Avenue and then the Italianate.
Where would that real estate office be?
Yep. Colin, you want to go back to the, so Colin, just highlight the, the frontage at that elevation what, you know, was depicting from East Avenue down to the leasing office.
So that was this frontage right here.
That's what that elevation was depicting along Cemetery.
So you're looking that way. And then it does wrap around here. So the public facing and then here continues the, the brick vocabulary of that building. And then we wrap the Italianate structure around there. And then this is also the, the little Georgian house.
And where's the drainage adjustment that you were talking about?
That's this space.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, technically the easement does give us the ability to kind of build over that easement, but we decided to not even attempt to try to do that and satisfy all the requirements.
I just didn't remember the front of the property being that straight, but I guess it is. It always seemed like it was kind of going around a round corner there, but maybe not.
Oh, yeah, there's a, there's a fair amount of radius in this area.
Yes.
Is that, is that the motion on to Gregory Boulevard?
Correct. Yeah. And we're, we're working with TMP and, and city staff to figure out what the best way to address this area is. They do have a master plan that they shared with us for this and integrating into that, they're trying to do some stuff with the walk bridge and with the bicycle network. There is a a community connectivity grant that's going to provide an east-west bicycle route along one thirty six. It's also part of the, the East Coast Greenway. So in terms of a bike infrastructure point of view, that's, that's good. This is also a conduit that's going to take people off of Fort Point Street and, and bring them on to, sorry, not Fort Point, Van Zant and bring them probably down Gregory and onto the beach or over onto Old Sawgatuck as they head towards Westport or even up onto Winfield and, and down one thirty six as they continue on their way.
And currently, and we're showing some crosswalks here. It's, it's a kind of evolving conversation with TMP, but currently there's no or very few kind of cross, crosswalks and and no sidewalk kind of wrapping the cemetery and between the TMP's plans and and, and our coordination, there should be some improvements to that pedestrian experience as people try to navigate the neighborhood and potentially walk to the train station and, and other places.
Will I have a couple of questions?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. I'm not sure whether to address to Mr. Gother or Mr. Everton, but you mentioned that the impervious surfaces will be reduced. Do you know by what percent from what the bank currently is to what your proposed plan is? What the percent of reduction is or what isn't, what is impervious at this point with your?
I think I think it's, there is a reduction. I think the, the bigger thing is that, that I don't have the numbers on is the quality of the reduction, right? So it's like, one of the big things is that right now it's just currently a huge asphalt parking lot. And we haven't, we haven't calculated the, the softscape that's available on the plaza in the, the catchment areas versus the, the green space that's available. But as it sits, it is a, it is a reduction in the impervious surface. But the, the other thing is, is one of the, the village, sorry, the EV EVTZ zone regs is that we're taking advantage of one of the points is the impervious pavement in the parking area that is exposed. So we'd be using that. So that would be technically impervious. And then you also have the softscape, which is going to be a landscape nicer than the, the shrubs that are there today. And then also the the resident plaza and, and the roof drainage. So that's all going to go to the stormwater quality controls that are prescribed by the, the drainage manuals that DPW puts out and zoning has us follow. And they're going to follow best practices. So it's going to be treated much better to a more current standard than it's currently being done today.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull up it. That, that, the answer to your question is in our engineering report. I'm trying to pull it up. And I do remember it, it does not include. So there's a reduction, but that reduction is, it does not include the the pervious pavement that we're proposing or kind of the landscaped courtyard structure that will kind of further reduce that pervious. That just wasn't included in the calculation. But before we conclude, I can find the information. I'll chime in.
Okay, thank you. Because clearly the building or buildings cover up a lot more of the lot, but and then are these apartments going to be rentals or condominiums?
It's currently planned as rentals.
Okay. And so your proposal is for seventy seven units. And is that like approximately twenty five units on each floor? And it's, is it one floor through? These look like distinct buildings from the front, but how are you dividing that up?
Yeah. So it's a, it's a shared corridor, shared elevators, even though the facade, you know, makes it appear as there's a series of buildings that the, the building functions as one. And the, the first level doesn't have as many apartments because it shares the floor, floor plate with retail and amenity space. And then the two, the second and third level. I don't know the counts, Colin, I'm not sure you have it, but those, those levels are probably closer to, you know, upper twenties.
Yeah. And that's right. It's around twenty.
And then a third floor, as you see from the elevation, that third floor does include in some areas, not all the areas, but to add the articulation that that Colin mentioned and to take advantage of the, the half, the three and a half stories that are allowed in certain areas, we do have lots on some of these units. And that's where you get some of the bigger units that we, we show that are three and four bedrooms.
Okay. And then, thank you. And then what about, you mentioned the real estate office, but is this that sort of a passive retail use? Do you anticipate like real retail? And so people will be living above this retail. So there'll be cars coming in and out and
Right. Yeah.
Of course, do you see going in there?
So Colin, I'll take this, Colin's, Colin's reference to the real estate office is this adjacent parcel. He was just trying to, I think, orient you guys. It's not part of this application. It just, there's a big sign says real estate on it. So I think that was his reference. This corner, this corner space, we definitely envision as more active. I, you know, potentially spilling out into the public courtyard or we do have kind of this kind of covered passageway that, that should be wide enough to not only allow access in addition from East Avenue, but through the building from Cemetery Street, but potentially there's some opportunities for outdoor, but covered dining if, if the ultimate tenant of that, that space you know, needs kind of that, that type of use.
How, how large is that public courtyard?
I believe it's around five, four, five thousand feet.
Yeah.
You have a breakdown between one, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just want to kind of echo Mr. Scholman's observation that when you showed us the front schematic, I mean, it, it does look rather huge. And maybe it's by comparison that there's a little bank there right now and the rest of the space is open, but visually it's, you know, rather imposing, I guess, is a good word. So I, I think as we're thinking about this, you know, we just want to kind of keep in mind the scale of the other buildings in the neighborhood. And I know these are the new East Norwalk zoning regs, three and a half stories, but.
Yeah. So just to kind of echo that, one of your, your regulations for single family houses, your, your heights of midpoint is typically thirty to thirty-five feet, depending on what zone you're in. So this is no different. So it, it, it can't be built to a height that's, it's essentially higher than a, a, a large single family house in most of your zones.
What's the acreage of the property?
I think it's acre and a half, Matt, or close to it.
About one point six six acres.
Okay. So you could ostensibly have three big houses on something like that. If it was single family zone. Okay, thank you.
Do you all have the breakdown of units? The one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, four bedroom.
The one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, four bedroom, something going as high as?
Yeah, sure. So, um. Um, one bedrooms and this includes a couple of studios, not many, but one bedroom, bedrooms and studios is, um, there's thirty-nine. Um, two bedrooms, there's twenty-two, there'll be thirteen three bedroom units. Um, and we're able to, based on with those laws, um, allow for, um, three, four bedroom units, which. Larger units than we. We typically propose, uh, but we think, um, there's a demand for it and, and the neighborhood, um, should be able to support that.
And I leave you including for ten percent affordable housing, work, housing, workplace.
Correct. Yeah. For the regulations, um, you know, um, we're providing the workforce housing, you know, onsite within the, within those seventy-seven units.
Uh, excuse me, what is the price point that you're aiming for with these apartments?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna, gotta be determined by, by, by the market.
You know, in, in the top range? Or is it a mid-market? Uh, kind of development?
Yeah. So like, it's gonna be determined by the market. Um, we're not shooting for the top of the market, but it's, it's gonna be a class A product. And the rent probably will reflect that.
I don't know if you were planning on hitting this. Later on, but can we go through a little bit the traffic changes that you guys were talking about that you're in the talks with at the city? And sort of of those, which ones you sort of, or of any of them, do you deem like? Must do before you guys break ground?
So Colin, you wanna flip back to the, the site plan?
Yeah, sure.
Um, Nick, while they do that, uh, there's action, uh, that we're going to be taking this evening. Uh, we're going to, uh, or I'm gonna ask you. To authorize, uh, an outside peer review of the, uh. Architecture and, uh, an outside peer review, uh, of the, uh, traffic as well. Please go ahead. I apologize for interrupting.
So, so we're, the, the, the curb line on, on kind of the, the subject property side of Cemetery Street is not being, uh, altered. Um, so, so any of the kind of restriping or working of, of, you know, these on-street parking spaces or the bike lane? That's not a requisite. It's, it's a, I think it's a, a, a nice, um, addition, but it's not a requisite for this project. Um, this. Um, the, the kind of left sweep as you're coming down cemetery and looking to go back north towards ninety-five. Um, that's getting altered slightly based on the recommendation of our traffic engineer. Um, currently, um, if, if you drive by there, kind of the trailers of trucks kind of hop the curb. So the radius just isn't sufficient. And, and as part of that, we're kind of shifting it slightly to align with our proposed curb cut here. So that's probably the more critical one. If, if for some reason that doesn't get worked out, um, even though it probably should, you know, irregardless of this, or regardless of, of the action of the site. Um, this site plan would have to change slightly and probably move this curb cut. Um, probably further up, um, closer to mid-block and maybe only access it kind of through the facade, break up the facade. And get direct access into the garage, which, um, probably, um, eliminates, um, the possibility or greatly reduces the possibility for some of this on-street parking. Um, based on that curb cut and sightlines and such. And Colin, if I missed anything, um. You'll pick up from there.
There's so much traffic that goes bombing by that site just in a hurry to get down to the beach this time of the year. I, I would hope that T M P would take that into consideration and maybe even tee it off. And make a stop sign or something there. I would hate to lose the green triangle, but maybe they can redo it.
Yeah. So that, 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 yeah, that, that actually was discussed, um, in our, our, um, consultants before even presented it to, uh, T M P or the city. Said that a stop sign wouldn't be approved, um, mainly because the, the, the site, you know, traffic generation, um, generated by this site wouldn't warrant a, a stop sign. But I think T M, T M P is, uh, working on kind of some traffic calming and. And maybe specifically reducing the, the speed limit, you know, through the stretch. That's something we've heard through some conversations of late.
Uh, how far back on East Avenue? Uh, is your traffic study going to go?
Well, I, I know they went back and forth with Mr. Travers at T M P. Um, I'll get back to you on that one. I, I, it was relatively extensive, um, um, but I, I don't wanna, you know, mistake that.
Thank you.
And Steve, if we can get whatever T M P is thinking they're actually gonna propose in here or do in the near term, that'd be helpful as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we can get that in any, um, and this goes for, um. The design site layout questions and/or the traffic. If you have. Specific questions or concerns, please get them to me. We can have, um. You know, when we get to Mr. Schumann's point, when, when we get to the discussion of the peer review, we can forward those on to our consultants and have them consider that as well.
So can I ask the, uh, the presenters if they've also got an outline for the proposal to, uh. Basically make the exit and end set ingress, uh. To the midpoint of the current building or the future building, sorry. Have these are a design according to that layout?
We, we have a, uh, we have a very, very preliminary sketch.
Okay.
Yeah. So that, I think that's probably the, the worst case backup scenario if. If some of these offsite improvements aren't, aren't deemed acceptable.
Thank you.
And so is that your proposed building is a retail space, right?
Um, correct. Yeah. Colin, if you, if you have a curse, you know, curse here. So on the corner of Cemetery and East, that's retail. Um, and then down kind of as you bend around to Gregory, that ground level is proposed as commercial, whether it's retail, service or, or potentially office.
Thank you.
Well, any other questions before we move on to, uh, our, uh, action items? All right, um, Steve, I assume we can do this as a single item?
Huh? Yes.
Okay, then, uh. I'd like, like to have a motion to, uh, approve. Uh, the, uh, hiring of. Um. A consultant. Uh, for, uh, an outside, um, architectural, uh, peer review. And for, uh, an outside, uh. Peer review of the, uh, traffic. And Richard moves. Is there a second? And Brian, uh, seconds? Um. Let's, uh, let's do a roll call on it.
Okay, I'll just go by who I see on my screen. That's okay. Um, Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis? Did you? I'm sorry, Tammy, I didn't get your.
I did say yes. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ushak?
Yes.
Mr. Baxendale?
Yes.
And I don't see anybody else. I'm just gonna go with.
Uh, Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Thank you. That's a yes.
And I'm yes also. All right. So, uh, it, uh, again passes unanimously.
And we'll confirm, we'll work with the applicant on, um. As the process unfolds and I, I imagine they'll probably come back. Uh, at additional time before the public hearing to update you on progress from. Uh, whether it's design or the traffic or what, whatever elements you'd like to pull over.
I'd like to, I'd like to say something, uh, here. Just for a moment. In that, uh, for many years I've thought. That the traffic flow around the cemetery being one way was a nineteen-sixties. Uh, car oriented approach to move the greatest volume of traffic at the highest speed. Through the area. That's how we ended up with a four-lane highway going to the beach. Uh, and, uh. You know, which led to great speeds until we put the bike lanes in and reduced the speeds. Uh, I think it's a lot more manageable now with enforcement. But in any case, uh, the cemetery, uh. Circumference. To me would always work better, uh, from what I've seen, uh, just as, uh, with my background as a landscape architect. As a two-way traffic instead of one way. And roundabouts at the corners. And I know T M P is looking at all options and I am not. Ever gonna pretend to be a traffic engineer. Uh, and I have all the trust, uh, in the world with, uh, Jim Travers for, uh, what his. Uh, abilities and vision is. So, uh, but I'm just gonna say. That I, I would hope. That we would seriously consider restoring two-way traffic. Getting, uh, that's traffic calming right there. Uh, because people tend to go slower when there's, uh, two lanes opposing each other. And, uh, and with all the other, uh, uh, benefits of that, more options when traffic backs up. To take alternate routes, uh, splitting the traffic flow in two directions, uh, around the cemetery instead of having it all in one, on one, going in one direction. Which of course leads to higher speeds. I've. I've been trapped on that cemetery, uh, perimeter road, whatever, whatever has different names, Gregory and. Uh, various, uh, the East Avenue, Gregory Cemetery. And I'm not sure if it changes names at the top, but, um, that I've been trapped on that. Going in some, sometimes if the lights are green. Going forty miles an hour all around me when I'm on a bicycle. And it's scary. Uh, so, uh, anyway, I'm just gonna say that, the, to me. An integral part of this project is gonna be solving. The, uh, traffic flow. Obviously it's been mentioned already, but I just wanna reiterate how important that is from, uh. A, a, a long-range vision view of that neighborhood. Thank you.
Mike, Mike, we'll, we'll, we'll pass that on to, uh, the reviewer.
Thank you.
All right, um, continuing, uh, with our, uh, agenda. Can I have a motion from those who are present? Uh, to approve the, uh, minutes of the June second meeting? And Richard, uh, has moved to approve them. Is there a second? And Tammy has seconded. Uh, I think we can do this by a show of hands. All those in favor?
Um. I have not read them yet. Sorry.
Okay, that's all right. You'll abstain. Uh, then it's, uh, unanimous with one abstention.
Two.
Two extensions? Okay. Darius and, uh, J J abstain. Um. Everyone else approves. Um, comments of the, the director, Steve?
Uh, no, just a reminder, our next meeting is the twenty-eighth. You have that special meeting for thirty-two we'd have. Um, we may add a couple of small things to the agenda, maybe not, but just a reminder, our staff memo and stuff will come out. Right. And we get closer.
Okay.
Say that date again. I'm sorry. I just wanted.
The twenty-eighth, which I believe is a Tuesday?
Yes, it is. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I have that in my calendar already.
What time is that, Steve?
Uh, six P M.
Thank you. And it'll be Zoom.
Yes. Sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Just checking.
Uh, any comments from, uh, members of the commission?
I had a question. Steve, how's the affordable housing, like Norwalk's response to the affordable housing plan coming along?
So we had put out R F P, um. We surprisingly, we only got one response, um, to that, which was a pretty shocking overall. But we've been working with, um. Some folks on council and, and, you know, mayor's office as well. Uh, and we interviewed that firm and. The interview went pretty well, so we're gonna, uh, recommend going with that firm. So that'll have to go through your approval process. And then that, um. Uh, you know, the study will take place and there'll be a committee forum to look at that and that'll start, probably start in earnest, I'd say. September, maybe.
Gotcha. Cool. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, any, anything else from, go ahead, Tammy?
Thank you. Steve, if, let's just say this building goes through with the forty-four, excuse me, seventy-seven units and, you know, the ten percent affordable. And then we get the north seven with the ten percent available. If, if every new development that's for rental does the ten percent. Do we stay within our guidelines of ten percent affordable within the city? Or are we creeping our way out because we're adding so many more units? I know it's. You said.
Yeah, it, it doesn't, it's not gonna move the needle much one way or the other. With this project, if you look at the. You know, not to really get into the details of the project, but they had proposed, um, there's a clause in the existing workforce housing regulations. If you do a three-bedroom affordable unit, it counts as two. So technically they're dropping that percent down by like, you know, I think we were at like. Thirteen and a half the last round. So we'd be at thirteen point four nine or something like that. So it's really. These developments are, we're, we're not gonna move much within the, the. Rimmers. We'll, we'll maintain that twelve and a half to thirteen and a half percentage.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure, Mike.
Not to extend the evening, I have got a beautiful ribeye sitting downstairs just waiting. So I am dying to get out of here, uh, but. Uh, the, uh, affordable housing. Uh. Uh, number, the eight, we're never gonna be below ten percent, I don't think. That, I mean, there's just no possible way. But one of the, um. Well, you know what? I'm gonna ask this question the next time. I, it's not, this is not the right time. I'm sorry. I, I just. Tammy's question was very good. And it started a conversation in my head, but I'm gonna hold off. So, uh, uh, cancel that.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? There are several seconds. All those in favor?
Hi.
Unanimous. Have a good evening. See you on the twenty-eighth.
Good night.
Bye.